...nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. I will just reverse two things. We have a dangerousness dog hearing scheduled for six thirty-five and it's being six thirty-five. I'll start that and then we'll enter into public comments right after that. Okay?
Do you want the public comment?
I got this right here.
Yep.
Okay, Town of Barry hearing notice, dog hearing, in accordance with provision Master Animal Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, and Barry Bylaw, Chapter eleven, Section thirteen, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Monday, March nineteenth at six thirty-five P.M. to determine if a dog or dogs at six twelve Wheelwright Road, Barry, Mass. is a potentially dangerous... is potentially dangerous or dangerous dog. The meeting will be in Selectmen's Meeting Room, Henry Woods Building, first floor forty West Street, Barry, at which time parties will have an opportunity to be heard. The meeting room is accessible persons requiring special accommodation should contact the Selectmen's Office in advance and that's for the Board of Selectmen, Fay Strukowski, Administrative Assistant. I don't know who wants to start off? Okay, yeah?
I would invite the ACO up.
What?
The Animal Control Officer.
Yeah.
She's in the back.
Okay, would you like to speak first? Come on up. Just let her beat them. Okay, everybody will get a chance.
Could I just have you guys sign in? We have a sign-in sheet for you on the table.
We're just passing out copies of law pertaining to three medical records.
Okay, thank you.
I'm first.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I guess I want to preface this by stating that at the time of the incident, one of the incident question, I was not employed as the ACO for the times at that point. So my information is going off of police reports and reports from the previous animal controls at the time. So I'll just start by saying just basically the basics. On November fifteenth at two thousand and seventeen, two police officers, Officer Ryle and La Perle, were dispatched to six twelve Wheelwright Road in Barry to perform a welfare check. Upon arrival, Officer La Perle exited his cruiser, heard a female voice yell, "Don't go near the dogs." The officers observed a dog in the yard barking and three females also in the yard next to parked vehicles. A pit bull type dog suddenly leapt towards Officer La Perle's upper body, attempting to bite his left forearm as he went to push the dog away. The dog then bit Officer La Perle in the left thigh. The officer kicked the dog off his leg and drew a service weapon. The dog then ran towards and attempted to bite Officer Ryle, who withdrew his service weapon and fired one round in the direction of the dog. The dog ran towards the yard where the female almost subsequently subdued the dog and secured it in a vehicle. Shoesbury Animal Control Officer Leona Pease, acting on behalf of Barry Regional Animal Control, picked up the dog, bringing it to our secure shelter for quarantine. The dog was walked to the ACO van and placed inside by the owner. The dog was aggressive and agitated at this time. The dog was moved from the van using two snare poles and placed in our kennel. The dog was not handled during its confinement. Instead, the guillotine-style doors were used to ensure the safety of the ACOs to put the dog outside in the inside kennels and vice versa. The dog could not be handled at this time and acted in an aggressive manner when anyone approached. The dog was released from quarantine after the legal time and returned to the owners. And the dog is listed as a male brown and white pit bull type dog. Recently, at the same address, going back just a couple weeks ago, on Friday the ninth of March, there was another incident at the same address pertaining to a different dog there. Another assistant ACO took the call on Friday, March ninth, from a Shirley Lamb of eight fourteen Wheelwright Road. She was transported to the hospital by ambulance after the incident involving the dogs at six twelve Wheelwright Road. Her husband was afraid at the time she might have a concussion and also was afraid her arm might have been broken. On Sunday, three eleven, two other assistant ACOs, Heward and Eobatius, can't say his names, went to eight fourteen Wheelwright Road to follow up. The victim stated she walks each morning and evening and while walking on Friday, three nineteen, a mastiff type dog, again from six twelve Wheelwright Road, came charging from the back of the house, jumped, grabbed, growled, grabbed her arm, ripped her sweater, and bit her arm knocking her to the ground. She stated the lump on the back of her head was the size of softball. She also stated when she hit the ground, it knocked the wind out of her. No concussion or broken arm, but there were pictures, they had the pictures. She hit the ground very hard at the time. It was a nasty fall. She's also diabetic, so things like this can be very dangerous. Again, I'm going by other ACOs' report. She stated that the neighbors did apologize and she was in more than trouble with the neighbors. We've been to that address several times for different things, some pertaining to dogs being loose, some pertaining to people calling saying that the dogs are being neglected, tied outside in all kind of inclement weather and just not being cared for properly. So it's been an ongoing of problems of irresponsible dog ownership at the address.
Okay, yes.
The dog that they're talking about that is tied outside is a husky and she's not left outside all day. She's the only one who gets tied out for, um, she also has a husky outside.
Yeah.
And...
It's a deranged husky.
Yeah. She's not left outside for more than eight hours a day. And if she comes inside, she gets too hot, so that's her brief. She's the only one that gets tied out.
So as you can see from the people that gave you on page... On page three, the first...
This one?
Yeah, the first, the one...
No, that's my...
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah. So if you look at the page three of that, the first couple pages pertaining to if you're going to deem a dog a nuisance, which in this case wouldn't be acceptable, wouldn't be interesting to deem the dog dangerous. So on page three, starting there, it will talk to you about... halfway down it says that if the guardian has already deemed a dang- a dog, a dangerous dog, you can order one of the following. They are outlined there. I'll bullet them for you if, you know, put easy speak if you don't want to read the whole page. But those are the actions that can be taken.
Hold on, hold on.
No, I just want a copy of that paper.
Yes, we want copies of everything that's been, that's been, uh, dangerous dog laws. Thank you.
Okay, now do you have a recommendation for us at this point, or?
The first step of the process would be for the Selectmen to deem the dog dangerous or consider it a nuisance. So that's something that would have to be decided on to begin with. If that's the case, we have a list of things that would be a requirement. If they cannot comply with this list, which is awfully extensive, then it would be our recommendation of the dog be humanely euthanized.
That the dog be what?
Humanely euthanized.
Excuse me?
Humanely euthanized.
Okay. Okay, yes, yes.
In regards to the first case, nothing was mentioned about a gunshot going off nearly killing my daughter. Nothing was said about being, uh, being tased in my yard. Nothing was said when I asked if I have my rights, our constitutional rights adhered to. That was also not given. We were not able to, to say anything, not anything at all. This, and then say this has to do with what's going on. We are being harassed and we know it. And this is the thing. That dog, when that dog was put into that car, officers kept passing by that car, tormenting the poor thing. The dog is not a vicious dog. Neither one of them are vicious dogs, neither one. They are, they've been hand raised by, by people who love them and care for them. How would you act if someone came to your property and was, and took out a weapon unbeknownst to anyone and shot in your property? You were telling your children and you weren't allowed to say anything. Shut up, shut up, get back, shut up. Our children were on their knees in my front yard. That gunpoint. Driving question that was supposed to be a welfare check for? My son at the time was thirteen years old. A serious heart condition repaired when he was eight months old. They threatened to tase him because he was trying to come over to me. They would have killed him instantly on the spot. Then, because they told, my daughters told them, "You can't tase him, you can't tase him, you'll kill him." They said, "Oh, we'll shoot you." I couldn't hear this because I heard this is what my children told me and he himself told me. He could feel the gun in the back of his head. We were not allowed to say a thing, not a thing. My daughters asked if they could speak to the chief to give us our side. We were denied. I was going to my door, to my door, to protect what was mine and my people, my children. I was tased. Then right down I went riding on the ground. My son, my eighteen-year-old, came up to come over to me to protect his mother. He was tased twice. Then he went down. I couldn't see any of this stuff going on. I had to be told by my children because I had a flashlight in my face and I asked the officer if you please take it out of my face so I could see what was going on. He told me he couldn't. He said, "I can't see you." He said, "That's the point." We were terrorized that night, terrorized. But you won't find, you won't find our statement. Not in your offices, nowhere. You won't find our statement because we weren't allowed to give it. And I can tell you, as my hand is up and if there were stack of bibles, I would tell you, I will not lie. I would never, ever do that. I revere that flag as something that's important and I would teach my children from the time they were this big to the time I am on their deathbed, to protect your rights, which were denied to us by our police state department. That dog was protecting my daughter, protecting me. She had him under control. She asked the first officers that came, she asked them to please get back in your car because my, she was taking the dogs for a ride. They were heading to her car. And one officer at the time, he said, "Oh yeah, okay, I'll get in the car." He got in his car. The other officer would not. That's, that's not going to happen. The only phrase I can use is a phrase that people use all the time that I don't use. All hell broke loose. Literally, hell broke loose in my yard. I almost lost my whole family that night. They didn't stop at the handguns. They took out their big weapons and ran around my house looking for my target. My husband's gone out. I have a handicapped daughter. She's twenty-five years old. She is mildly, moderately retarded with significant speech delay. She was in the house with my husband. They were demanding him to come out. He came out. They handcuffed him and put him in a car. Then finally they said, "Can you control the dogs inside?" He said, "Of course I can. They're my dogs." Then he said, then they told him, "You have two minutes to get your daughter out of the house." He said, "All right." They took their big guns and they held them up as my handicap child came out of the house. And they had their guns pointed at her. I couldn't see this because they had me isolated. And an ambulance under the guise that they were trying to make sure that I was okay because they tased me unbeknownst to them that I had had a kidney transplant. Thank goodness, nothing came of that. Thank goodness, nothing came of killing my baby. Now they're attacking my dogs. They've got children too. Do you think we want them to be, to do any? No, I don't want them to do anything that's derogatory or anything that's going to harm anyone. And everybody who knows us knows that. Yes, she got out of hand. Briefly, she did what she did, but it was brief. Have you ever had a call about that before? I think not. Have you ever had a call about the other incident or about my dogs being violent? My dogs can sure get loud. We like to play loud and we love our dogs. As far as them being mistreated? These are our children, these, these are my first responsibility, my hairless children. Or they're some hairy children that I care about. They mean a lot to me. They also mean a lot to my children, especially now that they developed a strong, what are, what are those initials? I can't remember them.
PTSD.
PTSD. PTSD. My, my daddy's fifteen now, has PTSD. Because of this letter, my son's not talking right now because of what's going on. And one of, and one of the dogs comforts him. One of those vicious dogs that you're claiming comforts him. And makes it so that we can all sit down and talk about all this stuff. My home is supposed to be a place of sanctuary, a place where, hey, we're not supposed to break down in public because it's really not the thing to do. But at home, you should be able to break down. You should be able to cry. You should be able to air your feelings to your family. You shouldn't have the whole, whatever, people who claim to be protecting you coming into your property, coming home to what, to what you're trying to protect and trying to make, make good a bad place. My dogs are innocent as we are innocent. And before God, before my Father in heaven and my Lord Jesus Christ, I can tell you that the Cullen family is innocent of what any of these charges, any of them whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing. I wasn't supposed to say any of this stuff. I was supposed to be quiet because I wanted my lawyer here. This is just too much. My family can't stand any more harassing. We want it to stop. Have it to stop. Thank you.
Both of those dogs that you guys are saying are dangerous, both of them have been, were, my dog, Nico, the one that...
The first one.
The first one. He was a service dog for my ex-boyfriend and he went to public all the time, always touched. Can't take him into public now. And I'll tell you right now, there's no way he even picked that officer because if he had, I know for a fact he would have not let go because that's pit bull breed. They will not let go. That dog's, they need to keep him loose. I just don't understand. If any of you have dogs, these dogs sleep with us at night. These dogs, they eat three meals a day.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Court members?
Oh, well, yeah. I got some thoughts on this. I'd like a little bit more clarification. If possible, from the police department's side regarding the reason why you were there and the reason that the actions were taken when you noticed the dog was outside and the timeline that you understand of the dog being outside and when you were, she referenced, you were asked to get back in the cars so that they could get the dog. How that all played out? What led to the initial this happened?
I can speak to some of that, but I wasn't there for all of it. So, um, being in this way. I, when I arrived, mu- much of what you've heard had already happened. So what I know is that we were sent there, two officers were sent there for a welfare concern for one of her children. Upon getting out of the car, the dog came across the yard. Now, I don't know, hang on. I don't know what was yelled. I do know this. I know when Officer Ryle drew his gun and fired it, he hit the curb. So clearly he was shooting from the roadside of the curb. So that puts the, that gives you a location. I do know that at what point Officer Ryle got back in his car and got out of it. And I know that Officer La Perle was bit and if there's any question, there's medical records. So where exactly Officer La Perle was standing? My belief is it was by the edge of the road. Not having been there, I can only tell the shot was fired in self-defense. I can tell you that the dog didn't react to the shot being fired and attack. No shot was fired at any person. The shot was fired at the dog, missed the dog, struck the curb. The dog probably as a result, of course, of the loud noise, took off. So dog attacks, officer gets bit, turns on second officer, officer fires, dog runs away. That was it. Now, as far as everything else that went on, other officers arrived, there was tasing, there were commands, there was fighting. Officers told me they were attacked and this is all in self-defense. When I got there, we had a gentleman, her husband, in a car and handcuffed in a car. We had, the dog was still out of our control.
I remember... Within view or?
Well, I think one of the girls had the dog. I know I ended up speaking to them.
The dog was in the car, yeah.
Was in your car, okay. So when I got there, our concern at this point was twofold. The first, because I believe that they had taken the people that were in custody away, or at least when I got there, that's what I told them to do, to process whomever was going to be processed for charges. And we had the situation where we had, she describes a daughter in the house and there's a young boy and the young boy was outside, but there was a daughter in the house. Before we could leave, we had to make sure that the daughter in the house is okay because of her condition and we were sent there for a welfare concern. So in speaking to the husband, he said that there are two mastiffs that were in the house and I believe that's the, one of them is the subject of the layer bite. And, well, we said we need to go in. He said, "If you go in, those dogs are going to attack you." And I said, "Okay, well, I don't want to get them attacked. What if you put them in another room for us?" He said, "No, they're big. Even if we put them in another room, they'll break the doors down because they're very protective. They'll attack you." So I said, "Okay, well, can you go in?" Because this is the last ditch. Our other, our other options to go in and, and to check on the welfare of this child is to take care of the dogs. Last thing we really want to do is to get into, you know, having to shoot dogs. So we had the house, we did have the house officers watching all of the house. The, I asked the husband if he would go in. He said he would, bring the daughter out. That was the best we could do that. And that is on our part, that's a big leap of faith. But we said two minutes because when the man goes in there with this hostile situation, we have to be sure that we're safe. We don't know what he's going to do inside. I don't know this man at all. Turns out he went in, he got the child, or the young woman. She came out. No guns were pointed at the, at this young woman. Were guns there? Sure. Were they in the direction of the house? Yes. But we were there for her safety. She came out, everything was fine. And during this time, and I don't know which of you it was I spoke with, but I had spoken with them. They were, they were fine. It was you, she was fine. Now we have, we've made sure that that, the woman in the house is okay. We know that the young boy's okay. We want to leave. We have to take the dog. Now, there's many ways to take the dog. The nicest, we took the dog the nicest way that we could, which was to have, was it you walk the dog over to the, obviously we could have done it another way, but the animal control officer agreed. They, she walked the dog over and the dog was under her control. Wouldn't have been under any of our control. I didn't see anybody instigating anything with that dog when it was put into the, into the animal control officer's van. And then that was it. And we cleared out. Figured we had, we done the welfare concern. We dealt with the tumultuous behavior that occurred afterwards, had people down at headquarters to process and we cleared the scene. We had the officers that had to go to the, to get looked at for rabies and, and the bite and all of that.
Okay. Matt has any more?
Well, not on the story. I mean, I believe I got both sides of the story. I understand both positions and so I'm ready to now discuss more how the law applies and what the request or the recommendation was so we know what direction we would want to go. It sounds like the animal control officer said the first step is to determine whether it's the two categories, dangerous or what?
It's actually a dangerous dog hearing. So the law is about to deem a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. So at this point, it would be up to the Selectmen to decide yes or no this is a dangerous dog.
I got one last follow-up. At any point when the dog was under her care?
The daughter's...
Yeah. Any one of the owners, I'm, I'm guessing it was the daughter.
Right.
Was it under control at that time?
Yes. It just wasn't going to be under our control. We, based on what...
No, and I understand that. I'm just trying to get back to the, is it a dangerous dog? And it sounds like the owner had the ability, despite through a chaotic experience and gunshots, to still control the dog?
Yes.
That's, that's all I was asking.
I just have one more thing.
Yeah.
When I asked the officers to, well, the first officer to get back in the car, my dogs were just standing on the side. They weren't barking or anything. They were just like confused because we don't get any whispers. But, um, so I asked the officer to get back in the car and he goes, and he's like, "Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to contain my dogs." And so he got back in his car. And as he turned to the second officer, I asked him if he could get back in the car. And he looked at me and he said, "No," and he kept approaching me. As soon as his foot hit that driveway, that's when my dog got scared because he was coming, like the officer was being intimidating. The dog went at him and he pushed off of him and he took off. And then the second officer jumped out of the car and he started screaming, "Your, your dog just bit my partner. Your dog just bit my partner." And that's when my, I asked him, I was like, "Please stop yelling. I'm trying to grab him." And that's when the dog went after that old guy and then he pushed off of him and pushed him back in the car and he jumped off of him and he went behind me. And that's when the officer shot the gun. And they picked up the bullets, whatever the remains from the shot, from the, from, on our, on our grass. I watched the officers bend down and pick these things up as I was being taken to the ambulance. So the evidence was, was removed from the property.
Cartridge, no, we have a picture of the, of the impact in the curb and cartridges can inject, you know, for a long...
Not true.
Cartridge.
Well, now, I understand cartridges, they don't drop at your feet. But the question more is, because I don't have that picture, are you saying the officer was parked in the street and the shot that you're showing is a shot from the street towards the yard that hit the curb? Is that how you were representing that?
No, I'm not. I'm not representing it that way.
No, you mentioned something about the shot in the curb gave you an idea of the trajectory.
Still back at the road when he shot and he hit the curb. To be more specific, you'll need to, well, do we have the officer's report here?
I do.
Okay. I mean, I can take a look at it. We'll have to bring the officer...
We'll let them. Everybody gets a chance.
And, and don't get me wrong. I don't want to get too far into this because this isn't a judgment on the police officer. So I'm just trying to get a little more clarity on...
I don't think we need any of that. I think...
Well, I do because it also gets back to why was the dog reacting the way it was reacting?
Well, I'd love to come...
Where was the officer?
I'd love to have some input at this point if it's all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I've heard a few things from the owners. I've heard that they, they were worried as soon as they saw somebody lose, the dog might attack them. It shows you know the dog has a vicious tendency. I, I, don't interrupt me. And that dog would attack people. To try to order police officers back in their car because you think your dog's going to do something to them tells me that dog should be on a leash already and it's not. To, to not allow someone in the house because you can't control the dogs in the house or the other dogs means you understand the capacity and strength of these dogs and that they're a threat to people, but you're not securing that threat. It's, it's not the dog's fault that it wants to defend you. It's not the dog's fault that it's protective of its home. But it's always, and I, we've had this discussion on the dog in here before. It's the fault of the owners that they let the dog get itself in trouble in these things. Just as a dog gets hit by a car in the streets because their owners didn't take care of it, didn't keep it secure. Sometimes they get out and that happens and it's a shame. Some people don't make the effort. For a dog to attack a police officer or anyone out of the street, there's a problem with that dog. Attacking a dog is one thing. We discussed nuisance versus dangerous before for a dog biting a dog. When a dog bites a person, to me, it is dangerous, period. It's, it's proven it by biting it. And this isn't once, but twice. And two different dogs at your property? This really makes me concerned for your ability to con... Stop, I'm not ready. Don't interrupt me, please. Don't interrupt me, please.
We've got to go. Everybody gets a chance.
So my feeling is you clearly understand these dogs are dangerous to people. You clearly understand the ones in the house are dangerous to people and you've done nothing to protect the public from these animals and that's what we're here to do. In my opinion, the fact that they've bitten two different people and two different dogs and two different occasions, there's a danger to these animals from your property. That's clear. I have absolutely no doubt about that, that to me, it's a dangerous dog, period. Your whole story after the fact, in the circumstances and things that happened, I wasn't there for any of that. And if you have issues with that, there's other legal resources you can take for those actions, but they have nothing to do with this dog attacking police officers. actions, but they have nothing to do with this dog attacking police officers at the street. And they have nothing to do with attacking a pedestrian walking down the street. Let's get... All that, all that backstory and tears have nothing to do with the issue. So focus on what we hear, please, which is to talk about the dogs. If you have anything to defend the dog's actions, that would be relevant to hear. To complain about the actions of the police after the fact doesn't help the dog. Your ability to help the dog is by keeping it under control. You've clearly demonstrated you can control it, but it wasn't done. That's not the dog's neglect, that's yours. But it's a dog that's going to suffer the deeming of this. To me, a dog is a human being, viciously attacked, and not on its property, and not because the human was attacking you, because it did it on its own. That, to me, is a dangerous dog. Where we go from there will depend on what we discuss and what reactions we get at this hearing, because we obviously have a lot of options from there. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Both those officers were on the property. And I only said for them to get back in the car, because it was dark. How are dogs going to react to a strange person on the land in the dark?
Okay.
When their owner's outside?
Let her finish. Let her finish.
No, that's enough. I'm... I've owned dogs all my life, and I have owned a couple of rottweilers. And believe me, they are very capable, very strong dogs. And if somebody raised their hand, attacked me, or attacked my family, that dog would put a very quick stop to it. Short of that, not once that dog acted aggressively to anyone on my property or in my home, or ever growled, showed its teeth at anybody, because that's the nature of how I raised that dog. The fact that the dog's willing to run and attack somebody usually, usually is how it was brought up, whether it's specifically trained to that, or it's learned that from a defensive behavior from how it's treated. I can't know how it got to be that way. But I have had many dogs, and I have never had one, ever, dozen dogs or more that I've had over my lifetime, that's had the attitude to go attack a person, period. So you can't convince me that because somebody stepped on the property, the dog has a right to attack them? It does not. It does not. And if someone walking down the street gets attacked by a mastiff later, you can't allow that, and you don't control it. I care about dogs, and I don't want to euthanize dogs, and I'm not likely to recommend these dogs be euthanized. I don't think it's their fault. But if you can't demonstrate that you can control them, and that we can't come up with a way to make sure that other people aren't going to get bitten, then other things will happen. I don't want to see that, and I'm sure you don't want to see that. But accept the fact that these dogs are dangerous. Accept the fact that these dogs have harmed two human beings on two different occasions. And if you can't own that and accept that, then I don't trust your responsibility to take care of them after this. So please pay attention to what I'm telling you. I'm for saying they're dangerous, and I want them caged and muzzled if they leave that cage. It can go a lot worse. It depends on what I think you guys are going to be able to do about this.
I admit that I did not have my dog leashed, and I know that that was my fault, but since that incident, I am dodging it or outside without a leash or anything, so I can control it. And she has not left the yard or the house since that incident. And I don't even want to let her leave the house, because I'm afraid that she might do something. But I... That dog is... My service dog is.
I understand that. And that's the first good thing I've heard for the dog. That's a productive thing you said.
She leaves... She stays in the backyard, which is fenced in, and I don't take her anywhere into the field or anything unless she's leashed, because I don't want anything to come to her again. Like, she is my baby. I would do anything to protect her. And from that time, I have never let her out of my sight without a leash on.
And I'll interject two things here. One, good, you should do that now. You should protect her. But two, in the concern, and you'll understand this, the officers were told, "No, don't go in the house, because those mastiffs will attack you." So we knew ahead of time their nature, and nothing was done until they've bitten somebody. That's why we're in this situation. That's why we have to act.
I will muster the dog and do whatever you need.
I understand that, and I'm hearing that from you, and that's what I need to hear from you, so we don't look-
Because that's my idea, I'm sorry.
That's what we need to hear, so we don't look at more extreme possible remedies. That's what I need to hear. I don't need to hear complaints about the police and other things. I need to hear what you're going to do to help take care of that dog, so this doesn't happen again, because we're going to have to take some action here.
So you said that you want-
Wait a minute. Okay, go ahead.
It's through the Director of the Board, not maybe-
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry. You said that the incidents that happened before, that the things that I was talking to with my tears and all that stuff, had an impact on what's going on today? When my husband said those things about the dog, why would that have an impact today if that was said about... At that incident?
Because specifically, your husband addressed the nature of the animal attacking other humans and warned it would happen. That's relevant to the dog attacking somebody. Your disgruntleness with the police is a different issue than the attack prior and this other attack.
It's a different dog, Greg.
I understand that.
And it was within the house and the confines of the house at the time, so actually-
And the acknowledgement?
This law actually says, at that time, he had every right to state that, and they had every right to defend the house. Doesn't mean the police didn't have a warrant or some reason, just cause, to do what they had to do for helping welfare. But I believe the chief made the right decision, worked with the owner, allowed the owner to do what he had to do, and he kept it safe. But that was the mastiff, not the pit bull.
I understand which dog and which time, but my point is-
I'm saying-
That mastiff they-
They can have a dog that'll attack a person in their own house-
Absolutely.
If they have the right warnings in place for personal protection. That's legally a right.
Absolutely. And what I'm saying is-
So I don't know how that applies to the pit bull, is all I'm saying.
This is about both dogs.
The mastiff has nothing to do with this case, because this case is, again, about the dog, not the owner. The law is about the dog, not the owner.
Okay.
Just what you can ask the owner to do about the dog.
My point of relevance to it is that you can have the best-trained attack dog in the world that will kill someone in your command, absolutely. And if you fail to contain it, and it gets off your property and kills someone, well, you've got it, and, you know, we have that acknowledgement that they understand that it's dangerous, and it's very willing to attack. We have that acknowledgement. That's the only point.
No, we don't. They never once said that their pit bull was dangerous in that same acknowledgement that you're referencing.
No, not the pit bull, but that pit bull and its actions did. And I'm just saying, we have the understanding in the house. And the same example was when they told the cops, "Hey, go back in the cars, we're going to get... Control the dog." They already understand the dog's going to attack at that point, in my opinion. If you're going to warn someone that's outside, because your dog's loose, "Oh, go hide my dog's loose," that's a problem. That's a problem with that dog. It needs to stay confined, and we need to keep it confined.
Well, usually dogs, if your dog is running free and you need to catch that dog, usually you will tell someone either to get in their car or just to stand still, so that you can catch your dog. If they're... Like, I've had puppies that have, you know, decided that they were going to just be happy and run, and then people have been walking, and they stop. And they put down and just play with the dog a little so that I could get to the dog. Doesn't mean the dog is vicious. I just asked them if they would stop, just so that I could catch the dog. That's what she was saying. She was asking him to wait so that she could get the dog, because the dog was just running around. She needed to get the dog so that she could get a hold of him, not because she was afraid that he was going to attack her.
Okay, Matt?
I have one other question regarding the pit bull. Do we have any other records regarding the pit bull? Previous complaints or issues about dangerousness, injury?
None of them.
Okay.
If I can speak for a minute. One of the ways that we've handled this in the past is, this is the first appearance before this board, this particular board anyway, with this dog. Now, in the past, we usually have one hearing and then a subsequent hearing. If it came back for another hearing because of another incident, then we would order the dog... We ordered the dog euthanized. And I think that that was a reasonable approach then. It might be a reasonable approach this time.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I haven't heard you.
Well, we haven't decided this yet, but in the past, the board has handled it this way, is that usually if the dog come kind of grant or reprieve, and if we get the dog back, then at that point, we take a look at euthanizing, and we have ordered that done in the past. We take this very, very seriously, and we take it very seriously that some of our police officers were assaulted. And at the very least, when we get a dog bite quite often, it goes to the order health that comes to us anyway. That's a lot. We didn't write that. That's a lot. So, that would be my thought, and we would need to have a follow-up report on the dog, how we were progressing. I don't know what the board members think of this idea, but it's kind of consistent with what we've done in the past. But in no way are we going to sit back and allow this to continue. And in no way are we going to allow our employees to be bit or anything else. We expect our employees to be treated with respect-
The citizens as well?
Go ahead.
And the citizens as well? You ever want to protect us as well?
That's correct. That's correct. I didn't suggest anything to them. Now, that was... That's my suggestion. I don't know what the board members think on that idea, but... And it requires an effort on the owners of the dogs, and we can't have this going on. But I don't know what the board members would like to do. But I know in the past, I've ordered dogs removed and removed from town, removed from this, and put down. Usually it's taken two years.
I guess so.
Yes.
I guess I have some... If the dog's ID is dangerous, I know we haven't even really covered that yet. I would like to see some things be put in place that they are required to do-
Okay.
-to ensure that the dogs are safely contained. I mean, they're listed there. I can bullet them if it's easier. I don't know if, in my personal opinion, it should be an open thing, you just need to control your dogs better. You know, there are different amendments that the state would recommend to do that.
I understand.
Some of those should be imposed.
I understand. I would just stress any one of these. Why we're all here.
If this were someone's dog that, you know, was getting mouthy and nipped at someone, and made a little scratch, do a little nip, and it would tug on their clothes, is one thing, but this, Charlie, this is an attack by a powerful, dangerous dog. Saying it's dangerous doesn't do anything to the animal, but it gives us the ability to make-
That's not the dog in question again.
Well, okay.
I'm just clarifying. A mastiff is a whole different dog.
I'm concerned, and perhaps we have no authority over the whole property in general for this, but I'm concerned with two. I assume this is going to come back before us on another day. I'm going to do this again.
It won't be here.
I don't know why we'd have to wait to cover this issue. This is... Looks like a pretty urgent issue to me.
Public hearing notice requirement.
Right, with this type of urgency-
Well, that's why we've got to wait.
With this type of urgency, I don't think we do. The parties are here, you know.
Were the parties notified that there may have been a complaint against the mastiff?
No.
That's why. I'm just... I'm looking at the law, and I'm very just tight, this is what the law says. I'm not saying... Sometimes the law isn't logical, and I don't want to do something and then have to back up and do it again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Chief?
As far as the mastiff complaint, I think we, as a department, need a chance to look at some of the reports or notes of the two animal control officers that did handle it. We have some questions, but we can answer all of your questions from our end.
Because I was not one that was-
Right, because it wasn't...
It was Brian that was involved in that.
There are some other things that we need to find out, so we can give you all the information properly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We were not even approached by anyone after the incident. Of course, she's my neighbor, and she... And her daughter and I have been friends for a long time. And did go, and I spoke to her to find out, make sure that she was okay. And... But that was the only thing, the only person I spoke to about it.
Okay.
Nobody came to the house, nobody... There was nothing until we got this letter.
Okay, Peggy?
Yeah, so the town clerk was in receipt of the animal report from Holly, I believe, and she forwarded to our office that there's some... There's the dogs. Are the dogs registered?
Not yet.
Okay, there's $185 worth of outstanding.
Okay.
Yep, so-
Tell me about the file.
I have, you know, what the balances are, there's balances on these animals, so I just wanted the board to be aware that the town clerk did forward to us that the dogs are not currently registered.
Are they vaccinated? Do you have records of that that's been provided to you, or?
I do not. Have they vaccinated?
Yeah, when my dog, he was taking my animal control there, he called his vet, and they got that.
That's how they would not have released him in the care of that... I don't have that. That was a bad time.
So my point just is, to me, is affirmed by this board. So my, my, my point just is, to me, is affirmed by this more. We're not taking care of registration. We're not taking care of the first dog or the second dog to keep them contained in the property. And, and my greatest fear is that, that, you know, we sit back and do nothing on this, and someone else is bitten next week, and this time it's not a neighbor, it's a kid running down the street, or a kid, his ball goes in the yard, so they run in the yard after it and they get mauled and killed. That's my concern. This isn't small puppies that are getting out of hand and mouthy with somebody. These are dogs that have intentionally, on two different occasions, attacked people. Without threatening another person, and without, you know, doing anything, you know, that should cause them harm. They've attacked two people. And, um, what I'm hearing is that they're, they're keeping the mastiff in a leash now, and I hope they are. And I think that's what needs to be done. And I, I think that we have the ability to say, at least for the pit bull, that we could make it dangerous and, and have the yard fenced in so that it can't run. And if it can't run, then the other ones can't run. And maybe that would give us some public protection. I, I don't know if that is a viable option that we can order.
It is. I mean, we would recommend, you know, at least an enclosure of six feet high, twelve by twelve, with a top cage section so they can't go out over the top. And depending what the flooring is, that they make sure that they can't go under. Also, things like a catchment area, so they can't just, it's not just a single gate. It maybe has a double gate so that the self-closing, that they can't just push their way out. If somebody opens that gate, this kind of double area, a lock on any outside gates. And there are other things even outlined in the laws. If the dogs are not spayed or neutered, that could be done unless there's a medical reason for it not to be done.
It's been done.
There is a clause in there that says that under the Mastiff Law 140, while getting insurance per, per dog, and it is all outlined in there. The dogs can't just be moved to another town, that would have to be notified because it's not fair to pass that problem along without notifying, making it out of town altogether. If a dog is out, things like having a, if, if they're concerned, if we're concerned about that dog biting people, having a correctly fitted basket style muzzle whenever outside the house. The law recommends a three-foot leash that has at least a three hundred, is it three hundred pounds? A three hundred pound, um, tensile strength, but three feet, we would move along with that and say six, because three feet puts a dog under your feet when you're trying to even go anywhere with it. Six feet, five to six feet gives you reasonable control over an animal typically. Even a, a catchment area at the house doors, if there's a problem with a dog coming through that way. Things to just promote that these dogs aren't going to be running loose or getting loose or any of these reasons. I mean, there, there is a leash law in there. I know the dog was in the yard at the time it was loose, but there is a leash law, and that says that if your dog is not verbally under control, which clearly it wasn't because it wouldn't have gotten to the officer if it was, that's a violation there. So, I think for our purposes, it would like to just see that there's something that we put in place to ensure the responsible ownership of them, so nobody else gets hurt.
I have, I have heard, and I don't know if there's something we have in town, but I've heard that I thought in Worcester that if a dog bites someone, they immediately quarantine the dog for ten days.
We do, we do that here as well.
Is, it, we do do that here, was-
Well, the state law, if an animal bites anybody, and it could even just be your own puppy playing or a scratch. If skin is broken, a dog has to be quarantined for a period of ten days.
So was this mastiff? I know it's off the top. Was the mastiff quarantined, out of curiosity?
The Mastiff, at best my knowledge, was not, they're saying the puncture wounds were from the fall, not from the dog mouth, that he got hurt, quote. Again, I didn't handle this case. I'm skeptical on that, but-
Yeah, I'm, I was looking at the images on a computer, really, not here, and they look like two clear canine puncture marks through the arm.
And normally a dog is quarantined, I was the ACO for Worcester for a number of years, and a dog normally is quarantined on their own property for a period of ten days. In this particular case, where we think that that might not be done responsibly, a dog can be quarantined at a, at a town or city facility. So the pit bull was taken and quarantined at, at the town facility for his, for his time.
Can I just, for clarification, can you tell me what the dogs are and what their names are?
Yep, um, Nico, N I C O, Pitbull.
Mm-hmm.
And-
All the dogs in the house.
Bryn.
How do you spell that?
B R Y N N.
Mm-hmm.
English Mastiff mix.
Yep.
Diesel.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, same thing, English Mastiff mix, and then, um, we have our Husky. Luna.
What's that?
Luna.
The town clerk has a dog named Freya. F R E Y J A. It had been licensed in the past.
Oh, Freya, yep. English Mastiff.
Is she still there, or she's not there?
Yeah, she's still there, but that's weird.
So we weren't gonna disclose that one?
We don't have the actual history of the original license.
Because she's just, she's not that, she's a, she's just a baby.
I guess I would entertain a motion of some, some kind.
Is there five?
Yeah, that's it. There's seven, five.
State law is a five, it's a cattle license.
Yep, that's what we're working on. And also can I just say one more thing about, um-
Two dogs that are-
Um, so Pitbull doesn't run around free at all. That was just like a one-time thing. Well, when I went to my car, that's what they would do. He's, um, usually chained up on a leash outside with someone watching him. He's never left alone out there. Yeah, he doesn't like to deal with him.
Is this a one-time thing with the mastiff too?
Well, being left on, left off the leash.
The one that attacked somebody?
Yeah, which, which- No, she's, she's-
Which one, which mastiff attacked somebody?
Bryn.
Bryn? What I'm saying is, you know, two different one-time things, and my concern is, you know, you, you don't, you don't have them licensed, you don't have your cattle license. You weren't gonna disclose the fifth dog till we asked about it?
Well, she just, we just brought her back here because she lived in Spencer with my, my-
Still here. We asked about it. You stopped at four. She had to ask about the fifth.
Yep, she-
Look at it.
Okay.
They're gonna limit me to talking about the pit bull, so we will, and to me, it's still bit somebody off the property unprovoked. I still think it's dangerous, and that's my opinion. But even what the, the chairman suggested, if, if you do nothing, they'll let you go off on your own with it. If it bites someone else, he's even said it's euthanized, it's dead. I would rather protect the dog by, by forcing some kennel restrictions on it before that happens, and before it has to be put down. I don't want to have to see it put down. And quite frankly, I'm not trusting of, of you with what I've seen with this dog history, and the lack of licensing, and the number of dogs, and the two different bites. I'm not trusting that you're gonna take care of it on your own well enough that it won't happen again. So I want to take steps to make sure it does, because I don't want to have to say we're gonna euthanize a dog because you let it bite two people. Okay? Once again, I don't blame the dog. I, I've had dogs all my life, and, and, you know, I, I've been attacked by a dog at my friend's house. You know why? Because it was abused in the past. And I reached down in front of it, didn't know that someone used to beat it, and I got bitten the arm. I don't blame the dog. Now, my friend's an idiot for not telling me that ahead of time, but otherwise, it's a lovable dog. It's still dangerous. And I said, you know, you ought to tie the stupid thing up and let people know you have a problem. I don't want to see this dog destroyed. And I don't want to see these dogs destroyed. But I do want to ensure public safety. And to me, that means I make a motion that we deem this a dangerous dog so that we may take precautions for public safety.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'm thinking, I'm not saying no.
Excuse me?
Just trying to, I'm thinking everything through. This becomes a long-term thing on the dog. I'm not saying it's wrong.
Oh, I know.
I'm not saying it's wrong either. I just wanted you to know I'm thinking.
I'll comment in the meantime. As far as the mastiff goes, although we're not having a hearing on it, and we're not gonna make any statements on it, I would do the same thing for the mastiff.
Yep.
If there's a second bite before we have a hearing, that's our, that's two strikes and he's done.
I don't want to hear that, I would be-
But do you understand?
Yeah.
I, I wanted to move on that now to protect that dog now too.
And I've already been taking precautions.
If, if there was, should be a second bite before it makes it to this board, the chance to go just dangerous is gone.
No, I know, I understand that.
And I, I, you can be mad at me all you want. I'm trying to protect the animals, because they can't protect themselves.
I want to protect them too. It was my fault that I did never run the leash, and I get that. Like, I can both-
I understand. I'm just trying to make very clear that, you know, I, I'm restricted here from taking action to protect that dog. So the dog's counting on you to keep it safe from having another issue.
Okay. Matt?
Can you clarify the difference between identifying a dog as a nuisance dog versus a dangerous dog, and what that means legally?
I'd have to really, I know it comes from a legal reading of the law, probably.
I understood. One is like a, a bigger record that goes everywhere and travels with it, and the other, I'm not sure what it means.
I was gonna sum it up in practical terms, a nuisance dog, a real dog that was out leashed in the neighborhood yards, that was, you know, tearing the trash, that was barking, that was running around, that was just generally encarnated with the animal, making a nuisance of itself because it wasn't being controlled properly. So, you know, again, tearing the trash, going to the bathroom in the neighborhood yards, things like that. A dangerous dog is one that has the ability to inflict harm.
Well, I believe every dog has that ability.
Or has the ability, has the, um, tendency might not be the right word for the inclination to inflict harm. And it, and it's shown now.
Okay, I would like to, just looking at the laws that's written, state where I'm coming from and why I'm not jumping on second in that motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Starting with the very first paragraph, "Any person may file a complaint in writing to the hearing authority that a dog owned or kept in the city or town is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, provided however that no dog shall be deemed dangerous, one, solely based upon growling and barking, two, based on the breed of the dog, or three, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. One, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal, or a person from attack or assault." Now, for a dog to know whether they're protecting somebody from attack or assault means they perceived something that made them think someone was being attacked or assaulted. This is a dog's perception, not human. So we can't apply human intelligence to what that dog perceived as a threat. So, right there, we're real close to not being allowed to name this dog a dangerous dog just by the law, the way it's written. It was in its yard, it wasn't doing anything, until one of its owners was approached by an officer. It didn't necessarily mean that that officer was threatening based on what the officer intended. It means that the dog may have perceived as such. So that's where I'm, the fine line between nuisance and dangerous, because I asked her before, this dog has no history. This is not a repeat bite from a dog, this is not a consistent thing. We can't do it based on breed just because it's a pit bull. It states it right in the law, the same thing. We can't do it because someone got hurt. We have to identify why did it attack? It attacked because it was defending its property and its owners. That's how it perceived, that's one way of interpreting that. And back to, is it the dog or the owner? I am still not opposed to pushing all of the things we just said to do. I don't know if we're legally allowed to mandate you do it if we call it a nuisance dog, but if we call it a dangerous dog, we can. But I think if we call it a dangerous dog, we put it at a much higher scale for one more infraction of any sort that actually could be much more benign, but just causes a scratch on someone, now causes this dog to be a whole different story. It could just be playfully playing with a little kid, and it ends up being a kid that you don't know well enough, whose parent determines that that dog was dangerous because it got up on its hind legs, came down, and scratched the face of the, but because it had a previous identification as a dangerous dog, the life is over. So I'm saying, that's why I want to be careful how we pose this, because I think, again, it had a lot more to do with the current circumstances, and the owners, and how that all came together, as much as the dog itself being a true danger. Because I have given, been given no history of this dog before ever having an issue. And that's why I wanted to state that, and really, I wanted you to know where I was coming from, why I was thinking. Is it a dangerous or a nuisance? And I'm really having a hard time on that one.
So could you restate the specific section that you think is applying to this?
The very first paragraph, and then part one after it, first page.
"The dog was protecting or defending itself, offspring, another domestic animal or person from attack or assault."
And that's due to the dog's perception, not yours.
Based on the breed of the dog, the dog is reacting to another animal. The dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following. It doesn't say the dog's state of mind or the dog's reacting to. You know, I, I see if somebody was on the yelling at you, a dog getting up and-
Does the dog hang on him?
I, I think the dog coming up and growling at you would be a, a very proportionate measure to you raising your voice or saying something to someone. I think the dog lunging at, biting, and knocking down somebody is grossly disproportionate to somebody-
The dog did not knock anybody down. It jumped up, bit the officer on the thigh, was it, and then jumped away.
Wow.
I mean, that is this pit bull's record of what occurred, correct?
I, I have the reports from all three people, if you'd like them.
I summarized that, but we can clarify that.
Am I misremembering?
The dog originally went through his arm, which is the dog away, the dog bit it in the thigh, he kicked the dog away. The dog did run and went after the other officer.
Mr. Chair, but if you go ahead and read the other reports?
So the dog was, I'm, I'm just saying, again, you gotta think of this as a dog, not an intelligent human. Its first attempt was reacting to protecting its family. It made an attempt after the officer. Rightly so, the officer defended himself, but now the dog thinks it's in a fight. So it takes it, so I'm getting back to, is it disproportionate, okay? It wasn't a, I'm gonna keep, it was kicked, it was hit, it was pushed away in its effort to, from its perception, protect its family. You consider that disproportionate?
Yes.
Because of why?
Like I said, I have had large dogs protected, and they, they don't jump out, their, their instinct isn't to bite somebody. It's to growl and try to scare you off and chase you off, and that's a, that's a normal proportion. Most dogs, if you, if you upset them or disturb you, they will warn you, they will growl at you, they will try to offend you off, to say, hey, back off, and they'll make a growl. They don't just naturally-
Depends on who they think they're defending.
They just don't naturally-
Some dogs don't think you need to be defended.
And same thing with my kids around. I've, I've never-
Jade never had it.
Couple of points. First, the officers did not attack them. So, in rep, they did not attack them, and to, to make the jump that by stepping out of their cars to do their duty, they were attacking hard, that a dog could normally perceive that as an attack, is a stretch a mile long. They did not attack.
I didn't say attack.
But, but the, the statute says defending the person from an attack, correct?
Or assault.
There was no, there was no assault. There was no assault.
What determines that line of attack? How is attack defined in the law? I'm asking.
Were they, first, we'll, we'll start with this.
I'm just-
Officer has to be allowed to do their job and the job now. This time wasn't confrontational because of the officers. The dog simply attacked the officers. Police officers go to people's property. They walk on people's property. There's case law after case law after case law after statute that allows an officer the right, gives them the right to enter people's property for confrontational means. An officer has the lawful right to use deadly force to protect themselves from any attack that is gonna, going to result in serious injury or death to themselves or another. This is the law. Officers get out of their cars, the dog attacks. We can't draw this big, this leap that the dog perceived that as an assault and an attempt to assault these people. These people are required to have their dog under control, period. I've been an officer for over twenty-seven years. I've never been bit by a dog. Many times, I've gone to the door and somebody said, my dog will bite you if you come in. And we've said, then get your dog under control, which they do. I've had dogs outside where they've, you know, argh, 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 and the person's holding them back in the leash, but put your dog away because we're here to do whatever we're gonna do. If you follow this logic, an officer goes to a scene of a hot situation. They have to go onto the property. They have to get physical to take the person into custody. A dog runs, runs out and attacks the officer, mauls them. By your definition, that's okay because the dog was reacting to an assault on the owner. That's not how it works.
Mr. Chair?
I'm not saying anything's okay. I'm saying, how am I gonna determine whether this is a nuisance or dangerous? And just remember, I'm starting with the fact that she said, when the cops first arrived, she asked them to stay in the car so she could take care of the dog.
I get that.
And one of the officers apparently attempted to do that.
But with-
I'm just asking, from that perception, it's not the same as you just presented.
Well, here's what I, and, and I mean this with absolute respect to your position.
And I-
I cannot draw the conclusion, I can't say that the officer was acting in an assaultive manner by walking towards a house that he was sent to because a person's dog is, that person who knows that that dog could do that should have had that dog on a leash for protection of everybody, including the officer.
I just want to clarify.
Yes.
What I was told here in this room, and no counterargument has come yet, is he was walking towards her, not the house.
Maybe he was to talk to her, but-
It's a different perception from a dog.
But we have case law that gives us that right. It's an inherent-
Nothing is taking away your right, but that doesn't mean the dog is dangerous because of how he responded to the way your officer acted.
The officer acted with confluence in his rights within the law and was attacked by a dog who should have been under-
After he was notified, let me get my dog.
So let me draw this one for you. Officer, back away from my property until I get my dog under control, or you're gonna get hurt. That's, I'm, this is what you're saying. Officer, this dog will hurt you if you keep coming towards me. Well, all of our training, when we're put under threat, is, well, we can't stop. What are you gonna do next? You tell me, stop right now, I have to worry about why you're wanting me to stop. If that dog is under, if that dog's gonna hurt me, it should have been under control. Are you delaying me for any number of other reasons that could be at play here? I don't know. I have to also, that's not a normal response from a person. A person has a dog outside, they have a responsibility to keep it, if it's dangerous, they have a responsibility to keep it under control. The officer is told, you, stop right there. He chooses to not retreat to his car. He wants to keep control of the situation. It still doesn't become assaultive behavior. This is, this is how it works. I mean, we, there have been people that have kept dogs, you know, on their property to attack police officers and people like that, and, you know, that's just something that officers have to deal with. The dog, if the dog attacks, that's the use of force, that's the assaultive behavior, not if an officer walks onto property. I, I just don't-
I'm, I'm not, again, I am really trying, this is not intended to say did the officer act appropriately. What I'm trying to say is, if you look from the other side of it, in the position that the owners were making an effort to try to get the dog before the officer made a move towards the house or the owner. It didn't happen. They've stated it's not been their history to leave the dog unleashed in the yard, running around uncontrolled. So you caught him and just, and I don't know the history. I'm just saying what was said. For all I know, every day it's out there running around. I don't know. I don't disagree, we still need better containment. We still need them to treat it like a dangerous dog, but I'm at a fine line of, should this dog again get tagged for life because of this particular situation involved?
So just please keep in, in mind that this might open a door to the way, the way people react to a police officer coming into their property when they don't want the officer there and they have a dog.
Mr. Chair?
I totally understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay.
Which, wait, I'm thinking, which police report did you read? There are three, only two officers were present at the time to actually give the, um, a, a report of any time. There were three. We don't know where the third officer came from, that would be able to make the report. So the others, the others, other officers that, that came were officers, they had called in from other towns to come in, who did not really know what was happening. And the three things, they, they said that the dog did three different things in the different reports.
As I, as I've been, um, my, with my lawyer back, when we, back, um, in, um, I think it was November- The report, the, the report that I gave that summarized the two police officers' reports were the two original police officers on scene.
The two original ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
That's my good Charlie. The, the section we're talking about here says, basically, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, the dog's reactions are not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. So, the dog was protecting or defending itself or a person from attack or assault. It doesn't say from a perceived attack or assault, or from what the dog may or may not have thought was an attack or assault. It says from an attack or an assault. I have heard absolutely nothing this evening to hear that that officer, who the dog went after and attacked, was either attacking- was either attacking or assaulting anyone at the time. So, to pretend that we have to interpret the dog what the dog thinks, no. The fact is, the officer was not attacking or assaulting anyone. And it doesn't say perceived attack or assault. It says from attack or an assault. I think it's very straightforward, and I think that, that this dog is dangerous. And the fact that it's gone out to the street after police officers, and if it would go out to the street after a police officer, it doesn't know the difference between a police uniform or male uniform or, you know, a jogging outfit. The dog doesn't understand that difference. And I think it is dangerous, and I think it needs to be treated as such. As again, I don't want the dog destroyed. I want to take these actions so we can protect this dog.
Okay.
So my motion stands.
Yeah, and your motion was to-
Deem the dog a dangerous dog so that we may take actions to secure it.
Second that. With that, do we need more, we need more caveats than that, right?
No, that's just the naming of it. After that, you follow up with the motions of what you want them to do about it.
And the, the options, the legal options are listed in the law. They gave you different things that you can implement or ask them to implement to ensure the dog stays-
So if we deem it dangerous, then we need to decide what to do to proceed.
Okay.
To, you know, if it was dangerous because it attacked three other dogs, that's a different thing than attacking a person. Very different to me. Dogs attack dogs, dogs are aggressive towards dogs. It's still not fun for other dogs, but it's part of the nature that we expect from animals. But I, you know, so I think if it was a dog attacking a dog, which we've discussed before in this office, I would want different confines or repercussions than a dog attacking a person. Obviously, you know my opinion, last time with the attack of a dog was very different than my opinion this time.
Okay. We have a motion that has been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Matt, did you want to speak to this anymore? Okay, here you go. Play the discussion, I'll call for a vote.
In favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor. Opposed?
I abstain.
Abstention, one. Okay, now, the conditions. Do you have the recommendations obtained?
And truthfully, we're not trying to make this impossible for them to do. We don't want to make this so hard that they can't contain their dog. We just want to ensure that anybody's safe. We would recommend that the dog never be loose in the county barry, which honestly, the leash length should be anyways. That if the dogs are out in public, they show where correctly fitted basket style muzzle when they're there outside the house. Not something that's harmful, something that's just appropriately fitted to keep the dog, you know, from potentially biting somebody. Again, the state recommends the leash length to be three feet, but six feet would be appropriate. So the dog is not out on something like a flexi leash, which are those retractable leashes. So a leash, you know, isn't something that consists of about being twenty feet away from an owner. It's within, within a reasonable distance of six feet. Then enclosure of chain link fencing at least six feet high. And at least a twelve by twelve, to an adequate room size. Solid or wire top and the fencing buried at least two feet in the ground or some, that's a state requirement. Or require a mesh of solid bottom so that they can't dig under. But the enclosure, if possible, be attached directly to the house. Toward the house doors, so that the dogs, when the doors open, the dogs go into an enclosed fence. And a knot at any time, you know, you take away that ability to lose them in between. And again, that would be something that if they were going to lock the dog in on a leash, that they'd have to be responsible to do so. A content, a catchment area, which again, is kind of like a double gate. You see them with, like, activities like that, so that when one gate is open and one gate is closed, there's a, there's a middle area so that you don't just open a dog gate. I have dogs, I've had dogs my whole life. You know, and if they're excited or happy, whatever it is, they're after, you need to open that gate and they want to push out because they're excited to get out. So that doesn't happen in this case, it is that middle ground area. So one gate is always open and closed at different times so that they're always contained and you can take them out safely. A lock be placed on the outside of the gates of enclosure to keep authorized people from opening the gate. And if possible, catch, and this is a trickier one, but catchment areas be constructed at the outside doors of the house. So again, that dog has that barrier, and it isn't just bolting out the door after a male owner or anybody else that he or she may perceive as a threat, to keep them from escaping the house. In fact, with the dogs being spayed or neutered, they state that is done. We do recommend that the dogs be microchipped and a number registered with the town clerk. So if the dogs are out, we have a way to track and know that they are these dogs. If they are out at any time, we, we recommend that the owners have to notify us if the dogs are loose. So I know it would be, human nature to not want us to know, but we'd rather know and be on the lookout for the dogs than not be made aware if they get out. And then again, per the match on a lot one forty, you know, it must get insurance to cover the dogs. And then the dogs can be just given away or placed someplace else without us being notified where they're going or if they pass away or any of those things. And then again, it's just not passed along probably to some other area unsuspectively.
Can I ask a question about the insurance? Is it, what, how much you get on it?
It's in the, it's in the paper I gave you. On, I can find that page.
Can you hack it?
Just hack it?
Yeah. Okay.
It's in the section. If you go to page, the dangerous dogs, that's on page three. And if you start on page three, if you start on C, that's where if they deem it dangerous. And the recommendations are outlined below for you. So I think it is number four. Who do insurance?
Number, oh, you mean, oh, the closure.
Top of page four, they-
Page four, the top of page four, number four. Or the number four.
Or the number four, okay. All right.
And that may even just count as homeowners, but-
Yeah, the hundred thousand is the value of the insurance claim. I don't know what, like, the premium.
Okay, okay, okay. Right, so you don't know if that's included, would be included in the homeowners insurance?
You have to check with your homeowners.
Okay, but you can get a separate.
You have to check with your-
Okay, all right.
Okay. We don't accept it tonight.
Do you want to discuss the specific things we want to put down there? I mean, I think most of these things sounded good. I was trying to make notes, they go like an enclosure of at least twelve by twelve outside. My question would be, can it be a certain height?
It says six feet high, it says.
So, six feet or a roof, or is, is six-
Six feet with a roof.
Six feet with, yeah.
What I'm saying is, there's height you could do with not-
Twelve foot might be considered acceptable.
Right, it might, it might be more cross effective to set a certain, so can we give them a height or a roof? You know, rather than, because I don't know which is better, but it might be easier to do a tall or fence than do a fence and roof.
It may, the only thing that, just one personal experience that I'm aware, is a standard dog pen is a twelve by twelve, and if you get one more twelve foot section, you secure it on top. And it's cheaper than trying to get a twelve foot high fence. You know what I mean? Like, if you, you can go anywhere and buy literally a twelve by twelve portable dog fence that clamps together on the side. And if you buy one additional section and sit it on the top and secure it, you've created your roof with minimal effort. You know what I mean?
Well, twelve by twelve is a hundred and forty-four square feet area wide.
You get two more sections, so you got a six foot wide twelve and a six foot wide twelve is your roof.
So you need two more pieces to make a roof, but they have to-
Four sides, but it's twelve by twelve, but it's only six high.
Yes, there's six high.
So you need two to make the top, because it's six wide at that point.
Okay, here, but we have two kennels at home that probably are, as tall as what you're saying, probably a little taller. We'll just put those together, so.
Chicken wire over the top will secure it.
Well, absolutely, we're going to, we want a roof put on the top. It's going to talk and recruit that anyway.
So I don't know if we want to, do we need to make the notes now to vote on it? Do we need to just discuss? Because, because it sounds like we'd say twelve by twelve enclosure with a solid floor, so they can't dig out, and a roof.
I think you should make them, make that your motion whenever you guys decide.
Well, that's what, so we need to discuss a little more. So twelve by twelve enclosure with a solid floor and a roof, with at least a six foot high, with a roof, double gated to ensure the dog can't run out when you're going to retrieve the dog and put it in. And also a catch gate, I think we could say either inside or outside of the house, whether they have it someplace so the dog can't run out the door when you open the door. So whether that's a barrier inside that keeps a dog from coming up in the door, or, you know, you might have an entry door and you're all set with that if you have a mudroom with an entry. You could, you could build that inside or outside, too.
The only gate that's supposed to be there if it's on the outside, if they needed it.
Something to stop it from just running out. And the dog will be on a six foot leash or less when it's outside of the house, period. On property or off, six feet or less. And it shall have a basket type muzzle. Now, this is what we did before, we debated this before. This is a dog to dog bite, where one dog attacked it on its, close to its property. I wasn't going to muzzle that dog and make it defenseless, but, but because this is biting people, this is where I talked about, there's a difference in it. Because this is a dog that's attacked people, I do want the muzzle. Because if it does pull off the leash or pull someone down, I mean, I had a hundred and ten pound rottie. If it wanted to get out of the leash in my hand, it could, unless I had it wrapped on my wrist, and it could drag me if it wanted to. So, you know, muzzling is a reasonable thing if it's going to be out of the house. And I think the insurance policy is reasonable. You know, it's, we've already got the bite and another bite from a different dog from the property. So I think it's just, it's going to be smart to get that. It also will protect you if something happens, if someone doesn't sue you for a hundred thousand dollars because your dog tore off a hunk of their skin and they got a scar for life. There's protection for that if you have the insurance. And I'd go a step further. I would order that these licenses be brought current and kept current, not, not late, for all the dogs. And that you either remove that puppy or get the kennel license and don't have it. You shouldn't have the fifth until you have that license, I believe. Is that correct? So that, that puppy-
Is that included, service animals? I have to look into that, I don't look into that.
Because it brings a service, registered service dog.
Because the service dogs still need to be licensed, they can waive the license fees for it, but they still have to have a license in town.
It may negate the kennel license.
What's that?
It may negate the kennel license, I have to look into that. It may negate, maybe for them to have a kennel license.
Oh, may negate, because it wouldn't be a fifth dog if it's a service. Okay.
But I have to look into that.
I'll withdraw that portion then, for now then.
I'll follow, but it's-
If, well, I can, I guess I don't have to withdraw. We can leave it in and say that if-
If it applies.
If it applies, you have to have the kennel license. If the service dogs are exempt from the kennel license rule, then obviously, the point's moot. But if you're going to keep five dogs, you must get the kennel license prior to having five dogs. Is there anything else I'm missing that we've talked, what you really wanted them to have?
I, I think you caught everything that we want them to have, but I think we might want to put some timelines on some of these. At minimum, I'd like to see if, like, within thirty days, we deal with the financial aspects that we asked about. Get your licenses caught up, figure out the kennel licensing. Unless there's a lengthy process in getting a kennel license, then maybe we need to figure out what timeline that is that's considered fair and reasonable. Because I don't know what it takes to get a kennel license. So I don't know if there's applications, and I don't know.
And that's fair, if that applies.
But outside of that, I'm looking at thirty days to get all your licenses updated and get an insurance certificate, which you'll need to send a copy to the board of selectmen, which we would share with you just to show that it was done. Then when it comes to the, the outside enclosure, I think I'd like to give them to the end of April, just due to the weather. Give them a chance to actually not have to try to build something on top of snow.
I would think since they have an enclosure now, we could certainly, it's reasonable to ask them to erect it on top of the snow and cover it for now temporarily, and then say sometime by whatever day we say that it needs to be made permanent on top of a cement slab. But for now, I think it's reasonable for the owner, the enclosure, to set it up outside and contain the dog within a week.
Well, for me, it's-
Make it permanent, make it permanent.
You don't get to go outside with the dog till you have the enclosure, but we'll give them until the end of April to have the enclosure, is what I'm saying. Because they have the right to put a solid floor or just dig a trench and put it twelve inches down below grade and just have a dirt floor. They can't do that till the snow's gone, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's going to be probably beyond May, April though, really. If they're going to have to dig in the ground, we're probably going to have to talk till May.
Well, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. You're right, that's what I meant, I forgot how close they are in March.
And keeping in mind, keeping in mind what hap-
Around two feet.
Okay, two feet, I'm sorry.
Keeping in mind, it has to be on a leash and muzzled, which means-
Right, those would be the things that would have to happen until you have the kennel in place.
Those start tomorrow. That's, you get-
If I may, the only other thing that we'd like to see in place is that if this dog goes someplace else.
I was going to say.
And the other dogs don't fall into this category, we're not, we're not deciding on their nature. But for this particular dog, if it goes someplace else, whether it passes away, it gets relocated or anything, that we're notified, it's not fair to let another town know.
Right, and, and I, I agree, I was going to add that, that we make the dog can't leave town, especially unless it's notified where it's going, we notify the next town. Because this attaches to the dog, it would be dangerous. And my concern will be, obviously, this mastiff that we had a bite. If it's not before this board, I would put it back before this board because I want to have the same discussion on that animal, to make sure that wherever it winds up going, that people understand that this, this has already bitten somebody. They can tell me all they want to be good neighbors and say that, that those two puncture wounds through their arm came when they fell. I can't imagine how. I know a dog bite when I see a dog bite, I've seen many of them. She's, she's trying to be a very good neighbor to you. She's clearly bitten, and I would be greatly concerned if I were you for her wellness. And, and think about, this is your next door neighbor, the dog attacked. You know, you're fortunate to have a, a good of a neighbor.
She is a great neighbor.
I know, from, from her, I, I, that's when I hit the ground. That's her claim, that's her claim. But I would expect that dog will come back before us and we will, we will have the similar action. No, I mean, the bite's already there, it's already out there. That action-
You will not see us again for that bite, that can be honestly-
That dog, that dog bite will come back before the board.
No, that, not necessarily. I believe, unless the police do the complaint, it's up to the owner.
Anyone can do a complaint.
I can make the complaint.
Can you file the complaint?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, because I'm, that's what I, and that's why I said not necessarily. Because I wanted to make sure I knew who had the right to-
From what I've heard and heard about it.
Can I ask, who made the complaint?
On this dog?
Yeah.
The police chief.
Oh, on, oh, okay.
No one's made the complaint on the mastiff. I'm saying that I, I would be inclined to make it myself if someone doesn't, because I want to make sure we get the chance to discuss that and make sure that dog is protecting itself. I know you say you are, but-
No, I know, so are you happy at the hearing, or no?
It may.
Right now, it's not scheduled.
We've been made aware something happened, and we believe somebody is planning on filing a complaint, but none of the details are read set yet, so that's just as much as we know.
Someone is going to file a complaint?
No, we've been made aware that someone may file a complaint based on the information they have.
If someone doesn't, I'm likely to, put it that way. I can't, I can't sit here and say I'm looking out for the town's interest and know that dog's bit someone and let it go without being discussed, which, which I can't, any more than they've done.
Okay, and that your motion?
So I'll, I'll try to redefine it as a strict motion and get it accurate, but-
You got the gist of it, though, right?
If the dog, if the dog, if he's not allowed to go for a ride, no, no, no. Or it's just a good old ride.
No, no, changing homes, changing residents, changing residents. So wherever he goes to live, they need to be aware of what's happened here.
Extended periods, too, like, two weeks. You should be telling somebody, the dog's going to be in another place for two weeks. Notify us, we notify the animal control officer. That way, she knows, you're going to such and such a town. And that's really, because, and the reason I say two weeks, and that's, I realize, a little arbitrary. Someone could say two weeks was a vacation, someone could say six months was a vacation, but it's still in another town for more than what is your average, I just went for a day ride. And that's all I meant by that.
Okay.
Okay, why don't you re-
This dog's name was Nemo?
Nico.
Nico?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm making a motion that the pit bull named Nico, N-I-C-O, Nico, shall, from the designated times within this forward, remain in an enclosure when outdoors of at least twelve foot by twelve foot with either a solid floor or fencing buried two feet down to prevent dig out with a height of at least six feet tall and a roof. Also, that enclosure shall have a double gated entrance to ensure the dog can't run out when you're placing the dog in or coming out of the enclosure. You also shall have some sort of catchment gate either inside or outside of the entry of the home, so once again, the dog can't run in or out. When the dog is outside, it shall be on a leash of a length of six feet or less. This will be a solid leash. It shall not be retractable, and it shall be of sufficient strength to withhold the dog's force. And the dog shall be muzzled with a basket type muzzle whenever it is outdoors, on a leash. on a leash. You may remove it in the enclosure area, but when it's out on its leash, if the leash is on, the muzzle's on. We shall obtain an insurance policy to protect for incidences with this dog in the future of $100,000 for a limit. And the dog shall not leave the town without notifying the administrator office and the dog officer as to where it's going. And this does not mean for day trips in the car, but it means for a stay of any length at a property where it's going to stay someplace else overnight even. Make sure people know of it. Have I missed anything? No?
The only other things we had on our list were micro tripping it.
Yep, no, not...
And I guess this would be a nice one, but if the dog does get loose, we're notified just so we can keep an eye out for it. And not threatening a ferries means that...
And I will add that. If the dog, if the dog should break loose, you now have to notify ACO. And our intent would be to capture the dog before someone gets hurt and return it to you. I would assume there'd be a, whenever they catch a dog, I've lost them. They might have run off. And you get, you get your $50 or $100 fee when they pick it up and take it to ACO that you'd have to pay. But nothing else derogatory if that should happen. But you have to notify ACO. And I would say, well, ACO will notify our police.
The other thing we need to add is to make sure that all their licenses get caught up.
Right. And as I said, all licenses must be brought current and remain current, including its shots and licensing. And the timelines were given. You'll be given 30 days for the insurance policy and licenses to be current or the dogs will be removed from the property.
Thirty, can I say 30 days may be a little bit financially? I'm not sure that 30 days is not, not reasonable that time.
I would consider the end of April, May? At the end of April? Matt?
I was hoping, I think 90 might be something. Because I don't go back to work until, I'm not even sure, do you know when? No. I won't be able to go back on my dog. I'll be going back to work soon, I hope, within a week or two. And then my income will increase. And that's possible. By my way in, my biggest concern would be the safety precautions before the financials. I mean, I obviously need to get it done. Everybody does, whether I'm working on my dogs to be licensed. That said, my biggest concern would be the safety precautions, the fencing, the basket muzzle, those things in a much more timely manner than that. Is realistically getting the leashes that we have, or the small leashes we prefer them?
That'd be acceptable, Matt? As long as we have the safety taken care of now.
I just want to put out there, if I'm correct, they're doing April.
It's April 1st.
April 1st. Which means the current amount you owe right now is going to add additional late payments. So, I just want you to know that that's going to be part of it.
What I'm talking about is the, not just that, I'm talking about the whole thing. I would be picking at it as I go, not the whole thing to be done at the end. I'm talking about trying to find and get the insurance, trying to get the, any of the other financial payment in order. But as far as the licenses, as far as the safety requirements, as far as the muzzle and all those, then I'm not talking about those. What I'm talking, yes.
I'll modify with 90-day deadline in my, in my proposal here.
For all of it or for...
90-day deadline for all the insurance and the licensing to become compliant and they must stay compliant. We'll say for all of it, yes. However, the muzzle and the leash is now. Tomorrow, I'll be reasonable, you got to go get a muzzle.
That's reasonable.
That's now.
That's reasonable. But to save 30 days for the entire financial thing, I have to...
They have a kennel that can probably...
And although they resisted me ordering the kennel now, I would highly recommend that you set a kennel up and take, take care of the dog. You know what I mean? Don't, don't give it the chance to run if it's going to run.
He just doesn't stay in the...
So, I think that ends, that ends at the 90 days to have all of this in compliance or the dogs will be removed.
Okay, enough seconds.
90 days? The just the insurance licensing will increase and the cost will increase. I understand that.
So, that's my... I like dogs. Period. And I don't blame everyone like dogs.
We all said the call for a vote.
The licensing will get worse is my point is. That's what I mean. Anyone saying we could do it and then not not be able to do it.
I'll second it. Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. I'll call for a vote in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. We're all set.
Just to clarify, 90 days, I believe, puts you at June 18th. Take that back.
We can send a follow-up correspondence to you.
Yeah, yeah. It's June 18th because there's 2/31 between now and then.
Don't.
So, two days before this date.
Don't, don't take it lightly, please. Because I don't want to have to have the police come back and say someone's been attacked, either them or anyone.
I'll send a letter outlining the deadlines.
Strike, strike two and any of those, either those two dogs is done.
This is more about you just doing. And if you're doing it, people are protected.
I hope so.
If you're not doing it and someone sees it... Yeah, that, that, good choice not to today.
Okay.
Thank your neighbor.
Thank you.
Because they may not have bought that other one, but thank you very much.
Now, I said that this is, is a camera in use. Now, is that televising, would it be on the closer?
It's live.
It will?
It's live.
Oh, it's live.
It's on YouTube.
It's live and people record.
And it'll be on YouTube and the picture too, or any reference. It's there.
I want my lawyer to view this.
It'll be there.
How would I tell him to find it?
If you go on the town's website, you can find a link for it. You'll find meetings and, but it's on. Or just type in YouTube, Selectmen Meeting in Barry. You'll find it eventually. That's how I fumble through it. If you have trouble, you can always call the administrator office and they can probably help you get more direct.
Okay. Public comments? Anybody have anything they wish to bring up to the board tonight other than what's on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Okay. We have the senior work off regulations that we've been working on.
Could we jump around a little bit?
Yeah, we can.
I know we have some...
Yeah, we got people waiting. Let's clean the house out, sure.
Okay. What do we got first?
Well, I know we have a request, a special event for Barry Family Fun Day. They're here. Yep. I'm assuming that's...
Okay. Okay, come on up.
So, I believe you've got our application. I can get senior files. So, we're looking at...
I wonder where you went.
We're looking at a date of June 16th, Saturday. And we should have gotten an itinerary.
No. This must be near the back someplace.
Sorry, I only, I didn't include that in your packet.
Oh, okay. I'm going to start digging because it's out of order.
I know the request for it to use town properties, not in there either. I left that out. So, I know we have the...
I see special event requests.
The special event request is right here with the packet fully signed off. I apologize, it's not in your package.
That's, I'm just, I try to keep up with it because, you know, I know you two go through a lot of trouble to put it in order for us. So, if we're jumping, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, we're trying to get some last-second signatures.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, I'd rather you stop me from looking for it than to keep flipping through pages endlessly because I'm not going to find it.
So, what do you want to know from us? Is there a specific... No, we, just so the board knows, we've got all signatures for the special event permit. So, none of the departments have any concerns, additional requirements or anything. I know Sharice is in touch with the chief and all these departments, Amanda too. So, we have all the signatures ready to go.
Well, that shoots down my question.
Did you want to see the itinerary of what we have planned?
Sure. I'd like, no, I'm always the one that says, are all the permits set? If they're not, get out of here. I don't want to see it because everyone keeps coming. This is the first one that's come already. So, maybe it's working. I appreciate that very much. You have no idea.
We got the two items, right? Use of town property and the special events.
Correct. Yep.
Same event, but just, okay.
Yep.
What are you doing for the Barry Family Fun Day?
Got a whole boatload of stuff.
I see beer and wine. So, that's off to a good start.
Start the day off, the Barry Library is going to do their walk-run, which they haven't done for a couple of years. That will start off around 10:00 in the morning and then kind of lead into other events, which would start at Common. Basically, start at one, the fun is setting up around noon or so because we have kind of a bunch of things happening at one time. So, there'll be games for families and kids. There'll be food and beverages. Obviously, those vendors do need to get their own permits, we're told from the board health, I believe. If there's any food and such, yeah. Right. Yep. So, that'll be going on in one area. We'll have music on the bandstand and that, hopefully, to have the food and the beverages in that area. And it will be cordoned off. We spoke with the police chief about that.
I was going to say, we need to see...
And they'll have respanes.
If we're going to have beer and wine, we need to see how we're going to keep it contained in the public comment.
Yeah, it'll be a separate permit. We talked about that. And we do have... They're not ready for that. We did speak with the police chief, so he understands and we've taken his advice to make that work.
I'd like to see that, though, quite frankly. A lot of these things are so PC nowadays, you can't have a beer out at an event. It drives me nuts. I don't, I think people are responsible to go out and have a beer or a glass of wine. And I'd like to see that come back. So...
And then there'll be games and then we'll have vendor booths. So, yeah, all the businesses in town can come in and set up a booth.
Nice.
Promoting their business, selling whatever they sell.
Are you reaching out to the businesses to let them know that?
We're waiting for you guys to officially approve everything.
Before we start advertising.
But yes, we will be.
I'd make a motion to accept the special event permit.
And I will second that.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's how they should go through them. I like when they come up here.
Since they're here, I'd also make the motion to accept the use of town property application, similar. But is it just the whole common? Like, what if...
We have a map that we've kind of blocked off where everything's going to be.
Kind of watching them go over that this morning.
It's not, we're not using North Park. We understand the limitations of North Park. So, it's the regular, the common area, the bandstand area, and then that other little, I don't even know what shape that is. Is that a rhombus?
Yeah, that works. It used to have a roadway going through the middle. They blocked it off with a walkway and some benches and things. But it makes it more user-friendly without cars passing through there, you know?
So, yeah, I would make the same motion just to approve the use of town property.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote in favor?
Aye.
Take it for our set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting it on. We appreciate your effort.
Absolutely. I like it. Normally, I like the common stuff. They have a little bit better. Get people out again, real fun. And I think you'll find it. People in town will welcome beer a lot out there to be able to participate. I think it's a good thing.
Was the other one in the pack?
Oh, you don't, you don't sign that number.
Oh, that's just a vote.
Yep.
Okay. I see. Dear Stanley, you're here. I assume together.
Back down to Fang.
We didn't mess it up too bad on your face.
Let's hope the rest of this meeting goes quickly. I'll take a packet. I got my doubts.
I'm here with Tim Mara. He's the president of the Lions Club. We're looking to do another car show on the Common. Use the same sections as what we did last year. This is the section with the bandstand and the other section. And like to close Concert Mall Road and possibly School Street North Extension, which we did last year. And the traffic went around and basically this, exactly the same...
Has the chief looked at those?
Yes.
Because now that we're finalized with...
We have the chief sign off on a special permit here also.
Why not?
There we go.
That was the last one we needed.
Now, School Street Extension and then the other one. So, people can still get around, going to get around Park Street.
And this, the School Street North Extension will probably do that last, you know? You know, that'd be the last thing, you know, once it gets...
Park everybody away and then fill that in.
It'll get busier and do that. The thing, this show here will benefit the EMS, Fight Department and the Police Department this year.
Nice.
And even though we don't, we're not listing it, it also benefits all the area businesses because we don't sell any food or beverages. All the drivers go to the local businesses and Barry Congregational Church will have their breakfast. You know what that... We're advertising, the show starts at 9:00 a.m. And awards will happen like 2:00 p.m. So, but the Congregational Church will start their breakfast at 8:00. So, a lot of times we have drivers showing up at 7:00. So, we'll need like police, you know, early at 7:00 o'clock in the morning to do what, you know, they did last year. Breakfast. And that's about it. The only thing we're doing a little different this year is we're having a kitty corral because a lot of us are grandparents and we're, you want to see...
Electric fence? Want to make sure you can look away and not worry about it.
We're actually going to probably do...
Throw some puppies in there, they're good.
We're going to probably do hay bales to keep like the kids' cars in one area.
No, you're right. Television when you...
I'm a professional uncle. I try to use that license with all I got. It's pure sarcasm when it comes to children. I'm a professional uncle. I try to use that license with all I got. It's pure sarcasm when it comes to children.
There's nothing funny than watching someone touch an electric fence.
I see how you're writing away.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'll defend myself with.
Who has such a defense?
It was a bad taste joke, but it was a joke.
We've all done it.
Yes.
So the, so our flyer's gonna be updated. It'll mention the kitty, kitty corral and the date will change, stuff like that. But basically, it's the same, just a different, different date in this section.
It sounds like some new ideas in there as well, which is good.
We usually get a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty show vehicles.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
So it.
I've got nothing against vendors, but I like the idea of letting people walk around. We have, obviously, you know, a lot of places in town to eat in our downtown and they can, you know, you might even consider putting a list out for them. Obviously, a little ways up the farm, they have the Stevens have food and beer up there and they have downtown, there's more stuff with the Berry Mail and Chinese food, not just the uptown. It's just, you know, it'd be nice to put out a whole list so people can have all their options, but promote all the local businesses for the eateries, so that would be, it's up to you, but it'd be nice.
Room to grow in, type thing.
Right.
Give them, give them, give them I U. It's out there. Maybe they'd wanna come advertise somehow. You know, they might wanna advertise with you if you give them a chance. Just thinking fundraising for you. They might wanna put something on the flyer, coupon for something at the restaurant, and maybe they make a donation to have it on your flyer.
They've actually done that in the past and actually subway cleaned, cleaned out the first year we did it.
But, you know, Chinese food could say, hey, you know, you're gonna get a ten percent off a lunch meal or get a.
On another day, not even that day.
On a different date or even that date.
I mean, it's actually smarter for a different day.
It'd be, it'd be surprising, but it gives them the opportunity to bring people back and, or to make sure they stay in town and eat and don't stay for a while and take off if they have some other option.
Through my job, I see most of the businesses in town and they all tell me that they, virtually all of them, that their business goes up that day, particularly the restaurants.
Good.
Not only around the common, but, you know, Northeast Pizza, et cetera. There's so many people coming into town, so.
Nice.
Benefits the entire community.
Said it once, I've said it a hundred times. I wanna see the common use more. I wanna see the town come out and come together more in its events like this, in the Family Fun Day and the Halloween. These are the exactly the things that I'm really hoping to see pick up in town. And I think everybody in town is, I think your participation's gonna go up as time goes on because these are the kind of things that get everyone's looking forward to, so I'd really like to see it.
Now, the only thing we haven't done yet, as I haven't done yet, is actually talk with Farmers Market. Cause usually they're in one side and we had them on the edge of Common Street and that worked out the best. Cause that way we, we could use the whole, that con and they were on the edge, people walking through them.
Yeah, brings traffic up for them as well. I'm sure they're happy with it.
Did a lot better, so I, so I don't think.
Quite literally, I mean, some of the baked, some of the baked goods at that are pretty darn good. Go through there. There's a lot of good eats, so.
Okay, so we will need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the, the use of the common for the event and, and the event.
I second that.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Similarly, the use of town property application.
Well, yeah, I said property.
Oh, you did both?
Yeah, I threw both in.
You're on top.
I listened to you last time. I try to learn from you. I do try to learn from you. I pay attention. People just don't realize.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Look forward to it.
Thanks for your help.
Doesn't just happen without you guys putting the effort in, so.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Band of Voices.
Nan Givens.
Okay, we, Band of Voices, come on up.
I have a letter that it would be embarrassing for me to read, but I will read it.
Thank you for your perseverance.
I'm a teacher. I'm patient and stubborn. It's fine. I can do anything. I have my knitting and my writing. I'm fine. Let me read this to you and I will put up with being embarrassed. In two thousand seventeen, this is a letter from Carol Jackson Hughes, and it's very short, so don't worry. It's not, I won't put you to sleep. I was invited by Nan Givens to accompany Band of Voices concert. What an occasion. The rehearsal environment and joyful heart really touched my heart. The hall is wonderful for performances. We were at Berry Town Hall, Berry Town Hall, and the talent seemed to come from everywhere. When there were times to talk, one person after another spoke about their neighbor who helped them or they had helped in some way. The sharing of music was so graciously created by Nan's wonderful musical gifts that I've come to know her generous spirit as well. As a lifelong pianist, I left there wanting to provide a nice piano for all this great energy and maybe sometimes join these lovely people making music from time to time. When I told Raymond Bushell of Bushell Piano Movers in Marlboro this story, a business I've been associated with for years, he wanted to gift a piano. We have a six, a six foot, six inch chickering grand piano that has been prepped and tuned and ready to deliver so that the community may enjoy even more ways to celebrate the love of music for many years to come. Sincerely, Carol and Carol Jackson Hughes and Raymond Bushell, and they want to know if you will accept this gift.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Do we need to discuss?
I don't.
Okay, I make a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
This is amazing.
That's, we, we will, you should, you should, we'll have, we'll either, either the night of that family fun thing is when the, when the Band of Voices concert is. So either that night we'll celebrate it or else we'll plan something else to celebrate it. We would like to include communities of the Circle of Song folks. I would like especially to include them because I have yet to be able to bring the two groups together. I'm a newer director. I've only been with them for five years. And bring together some folks from the high school who use that space also and, and do something to dedicate the piano.
Space set up where you want it to be specifically? And in my concern, of course, we're gonna make sure that it's not something that's just a rumpus on by people when they come visiting there.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll need to provide a lock and you might be required to do that. I don't know if it comes with a lock or not. I didn't ask.
I'm okay with that.
But it's easy enough to provide a lock. Almost every, I'm, I direct seven choruses and almost everywhere that we go, the pianos of this caliber have a lock on them. And there are plenty of other pianos in there to bang on. There's two of them.
I know people, I know people like to do that and I know that, you know, since we do have a lot of groups that go in and we don't know everyone who goes and doesn't go, just, just to make sure it stays. It sounds like a very nice piano.
It is a very nice piano. It's a chickering grand.
We'll make sure we take steps to keep it that way.
If, yes. And in, and the fact that the building is sometimes heated and sometimes not is not a big issue because most of the time it's not. And so it's not, it's, yeah.
Okay.
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 Okay, so can.
So we can work out the details. I can actually help you get contact with those other groups.
Yes, I have, I have some of their contact information.
We may have some too, so we can work to get that one out.
That would be great if we work together because I know there's some history between some of those groups and what I would like to do is see people come together a little more. But that's the pastor and me, so.
That's everyone. We think we're ready to see that everywhere.
I think so, too.
I think we are.
Work out the details of getting it in the building.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, do you have my contact information? This is your copy.
Okay.
Do you have my contact information?
I have your email, right?
Yeah, that's the best way. I can give you a phone number. I'm very rarely available.
Do you wanna write it right on here, Nick? That would be great.
Okay, I need a motion to accept a donation.
You already have that.
I think we already have it. I just gave, I just gave two more details afterwards.
Yeah, we're on the discussion page. We're ready for the vote.
Oh, we're ready for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
That is very generous contribution.
I would suggest that we pen a letter of gratitude.
Yes.
With that generous gift. Do we have a, a stationery for that or a card for that that'd be appropriate to put a letter into?
We'll get more money some time.
Please, please do. That's, that's huge. That's nice.
Yeah, well, she had to put up with my, my electric piano. I was really bad stand. It does this while you're trying to play it.
Yeah, I smell like those as well. My great-grandmother used to play a piano and when she let, gave up her home and moved into a senior living area, the one thing she took with her and donated was her piano. So she could sit until she was eighty-six and keep playing it. Keep playing the piano there and people enjoyed it.
Music lights up your whole brain and connects you to everything.
She may be gone, but the piano's still there and people still enjoy it and she'd have it no other way.
Could you also ask them to provide, like, what you're, or maybe just some paperwork that says this is what you should do, how you do it? So that we can try to plan on it, make sure we take care of it, right?
We'll make sure that you have.
Cause it can happen where people will know, but if the administration doesn't know and plan it, it doesn't happen.
I think that's really important. If they don't.
Thank you.
And hopefully, it's something we can.
If they don't, I will.
Hopefully, it's something we can look for, maybe get donations to keep the maintenance, keep it going and not have to.
Right.
Impact the budget for.
Agreed.
If we have to, we will, but I would think we'd be able to do it that way.
Whether there's a lock or not, I strongly advise having a lock and I strongly advise, you know, we.
I agree.
We can get a lock, the key, whenever we get the key to it.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We'll do an upcharge fee. Anybody who wants to use a piano, they get the key for an additional twenty bucks and that goes towards the maintenance fees.
There you go.
Except for maybe Ben.
Except for, right, those that were part of the whole donating effort.
We would be rehearsing there every night if we could afford the fees, but we go, we rehearse in Hardwood and perform here.
Well, maybe we can work on that, too.
We'll look. We'll see.
Well, we just, we, we're a teeny little chorus and they, they pay me rather than paying fifty dollars a shot per.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll discuss that another time.
Do we have anybody else out there that, other than the C P C group?
They're getting us a piano along with getting them some time for it.
That's all I see.
What do we do? We need to approve a brin inside to use the common.
We can take your these books and then go to that if you want.
Yeah, let me take a quick break for five minutes.
Well, it's only been two hours.
I know. It's only been two hours.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for taking the time. By the way, I thought you guys handled that. But it wasn't that clear.
It's all dog things are difficult because it's always.
It's hardly not cut off by everything else around it, but that stuff really is irrelevant to the dog issue and it's.
So to bring it up to speed, the CCC, you know, they signed off on the adult use regulations. So they're on Attorney General's desk. She's expected to sign off of them sometime this week. So then they're going to be implemented starting April 1st. So CPC, by virtue of receiving our provisional certificate of registration from the Department of Public Health, basically our license to operate, we're considered by the CCC, the Chaos Control Commission, we're considered to be an equity applicant. So between April 1st and April 15th, we basically are first in line providing we submit the full notice of intent. So as an equity applicant, they only require us to submit two other documents. But one is proof that we hold a public, they call it a community outreach meeting. We're scheduled to do that on March 31st, which is a week from Saturday at the town hall at 1:00. So cakes by him. So that will satisfy that on that day. And basically, you know, they give us a detailed list of description of the project, where it is, what it is, and then security measures, and then we take questions. That's 1:00, April 31st at the town hall. And we're invited, and we're gonna also invite anybody who wants to go up to the site and take a sidewalk and see where it is. So the second thing that we need now is a host community agreement. So we have our first one that we negotiated and signed last May. Well, now the state says, well, if you are going to cultivate, we're gonna, we're gonna apply for a, now they specify it, marijuana cultivator license and a marijuana product manufacturer license. So those are the two licenses we're applying for. So nothing in the project has changed. So they require that we have another host community agreement with the host town. And the host community agreement is supposed to be amount of money that offsets or mitigates any potential costs incurred by the operation. With this one, as opposed to the first time we met last May and we started talking about this, back then, the Department of Public Health, the regulations that were in play then, they gave us no guidance. You remember that. There was, you know, you go in and you negotiate this thing. And, you know, there were examples brought in of hundreds of thousands of dollars in places like Worcester and Boston. And we really didn't know how to figure it out, and we came to an agreement on it. The new regs come out and they're very, very clear as to what can be negotiated, at least the maximum. So what happened was last July, the original law was amended. And I gave you a copy of the amendment that says a community host agreement for a medical marijuana or adult use marijuana establishment, which is what we consider, it can be for no more than 3% of gross sales and no longer than five years. So now we have clear guidance as far as that's the maximum allowable by law. So in, as we looked at it, you know, and I've had, I've had talks, I've talked to the editor about it. CDC has decided to come here tonight and simply say, okay, that's, that's the max allowable by law, and that's what we're proposing, 3% of the gross sales for a period of five years. So there's, you know, there's gonna have to be some creativity involved in that too, because you've got, we've gotta show that these funds are being used for a lot of different things that can come along with this. And, you know, obviously, we're, we're, the security up there is gonna be an important issue, and, you know, we're hoping that it's not going to be an issue. But, you know, I know that Nick was here, and, you know, maybe Q Drug wants to put together some kind of awareness program that can be, you know, some of this money can be used as. Basically, what I'm saying is, okay, so if you pay 3% of gross sales for year one or year two, and the operation's moving, and it's an amount that the police haven't been up there, not gonna work, emergency services haven't been up there, it would still be nice to have some other aspects that could use these funds. We did talk about a restaurant program with the senior center, I don't know how that would relate, but that would be for you guys to decide. But anyway, so we're proposing an amendment to the original agreement. This is what we've been advised is the, is the simplest way to do this. So the amendment will, well, I actually have copies, I don't know if you guys got it.
I did provide them.
So it's, it's, you know, it's, the, the original agreement is the amended for 3% gross sales for five years. Now, when we first talked about this, our original agreement, that was gonna be in perpetuity as long as we were operating. So Catherine and I sat down and talked at length about that too. There's nothing in the law that precludes us from saying, and after those first five years, when we give you 3%, we're gonna then continue to honor that original agreement as long as we are, our signs are operating with them. And so I'm hoping that I've, I've provided enough information, documentation, that you can take it into consideration. Once again, emphasizing that there's nothing more that we can do. That's the maximum allowable. And if we could, I'm, I'm, I am hoping to have this by the next selectmen's, selectmen's meeting, because that will be April 2nd, which will be the day after CCC starts taking applications. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board membership?
Yeah. First question they have is, the general wording of the host agreement, some of it might have been based strictly on what we thought medical was gonna allow. And so it may have had, so I'd have to reread it before I'm saying anything really applies here as to what we allowed you to do. I mean, right now, we were saying just no onsite sales was primarily the thing we had tried to hold you to. But obviously, with the new CCC and the way they broke up all the divisions of everything and all the possibilities of everything, we may need to double check. And then also find out, because April 2nd, obviously, is two and a half, three months before town meeting, and any other potential bylaws that might get passed, even if we go, get into an HCA with you, there may need to be some additional statements in there pending the town approval of bylaws or bylaws the town approves that may say, well, we agreed to, you can't do. The town said you can't, so now we gotta, I'm just saying that those are some of the caveats we gotta keep in mind when it comes to if we were to even pursue something by April 2nd. There's gonna be some unknowns that could even change what we do on April 2nd. How does that affect your standing with the state when you submit an application?
That's a really good question. You know what? They're tough to get in touch with, now, but I, how about I have asked them that? I've said, listen, we're in a town, right now, there's a temporary moratorium. We've had discussions. There's gonna be a ballot question with regard to, you know, dispensaries, walk-up dispensaries. However, the town's now starting out, you know, talking about bylaws with regard to cultivation, et cetera. That will be presented at town meeting. I have this HCA, I wanna submit it. Can I submit it with contingency? Basically, the town's saying, okay, yes, we agree to this, contingent upon, you know, the moratorium being lifted or proper zoning by bylaws, and I expect that. And we can certainly incorporate that, and we can, I can have Paul put together language that we can give some comfort on that. If it's, you know, with regard to the use up there and, you know, the whole onsite sales, remember, we have a covenant on the way and that precludes that. And it's still, that's not, not any interest. It's cultivation, not manufacturing.
So you're saying that the, that the 3%, any money that, without trying to look the law up and read it, any monies that are donated for the percentage must be used for the reasons stated, for medical reasons of marijuana-related, public safety-related, they are confined to be using for that. Right? So, so any funds coming in have to be used somehow towards a purpose of security, police force, public education? They're not general fund money?
No.
There's no, there's no option to that?
Well.
Because it's medical, and the recreational, and the future could be different if there's recreational.
Taxes could be different.
Yeah, yeah, you get it. This, they're both the same now. You know, they're both governed by this new amendment to the law. So it's both medical and adult use. It's, it's 3%, and then I think, actually, let me read it for you. And this is what I mean, you know, the town will wanna get a little bit creative as far as legitimately.
Now, what I'm saying is, I'll kinda talk quietly, it doesn't get too bad, but the, the medical side, obviously, the idea is to keep it, it's a donation, and we use it back towards those things. I think the recreational side is, is more towards a taxable for use for, for public funds.
I don't think, I don't think you have any control.
That's what, that's what I'm wondering, because obviously, the reason the state does this is because they wanna tax it. And they're gonna grab, grab the tax and give some percentage of it back towards those other things.
This isn't a tax though.
I know, this is a contribution, but in theory, in the future, as you said before, you'd like to ask somebody, you have a medical card? Okay, here's your medical marijuana, this is our tax. You don't have a medical card? Same shelf, same stuff. Does that apply differently to the portion that's sold for non-medical use as far as it's taxed? And the tax money's not restricted, but the donation money is? Does it, see what I'm saying? Or we taste, is the gross sale strictly for, for the gross of everything you sell? And that, that is this money to be used for?
I'm gonna tell you, so it may include, the host community may include a community impact fee for the, for the host community, provided however that the community impact fee shall be reasonably related to the costs imposed on the municipality by the operation of a marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatments.
Right, so that's just the community impact fee? That doesn't, that doesn't state taxes?
Right, that's the 3% community host agreement. So we're saying, we're gonna give you 3% of our gross sales. If the burden is then on the town to say, okay, well, here's, here's where this 3% went. Will the state audit that? I don't know. But that's why there's opportunities for lots of different places for that money to go.
What I'm looking at, though, is more specifically, if and when we come down and the town says, yes, we'll have sales of recreational marijuana in town, and we, and that's, you know, permitted, that may be taxed.
That is taxed, retail.
And that taxed, that is used however we want. But this portion, what I'm saying is if some of this that we're talking about is produced at your facility, if it's sold for recreational, in other words, if it's sold without a medical card later.
Has no difference.
It would just be, that 3% is still there, but the tax would be on top of that on the person who buys it? If it's bought for non-medical.
No, it has nothing to do with non-medical or, or medical.
This is just for what you produce in that facility?
The 3% tax, I think you're referring to, are you referring to that 3% tax that can go into, then your fund?
Right.
So that is only on retail sales. So let by, at the, the vote, if the town votes to allow a dispensary, and somebody decides to come in and put one here, then the town will get 3%. First of all, that entity will have to come and negotiate another community host agreement to get that benefit. But because it's retail sales, you'll then get that 3% tax. It goes through the state.
I'm not commuting my question very well, I think. This obviously is a medical marijuana facility. That's the intent, that's the host.
No, no. What he's saying is he would be treated like a wholesaler, not a retailer. And Massachusetts does not allow you to tax a wholesaler's sale to a retailer. So in lieu of that, they provided the HCA 3% on gross sales as an option. And they maxed the wholesalers, we're not gonna call it a tax, to 3%, the contribution, by allowing a town to enter the HCA and say you can go up to the 3%.
And it has to be used for?
But we're still talking about the one same facility we've been talking about right along?
Yes.
Okay. If somebody were to have a recreational marijuana grow facility, different license, different permit, everything else down the road, even if they were wholesaling their product, will we still not, we would be able to collect a tax on that, would we not? Because it's recreational?
Not a tax. You would still.
You'd fall under these same regulations?
So it would be the same, it would be the same, it's still not taxable because it's wholesale, period. So that's what I was driving at. If a portion of this marijuana in the future became recreational as opposed to medical, but since it's gonna be done wholesale, not retail, it would be your voluntary 3% contribution towards those funds. It will not be taxed because it's wholesale.
I believe the way the regulations now are, I mean, he could sell to whether it's medical or recreational, and it doesn't change his status with the state or his status under the community agreement with us. As long as he's selling to another retailer, it doesn't matter if they sell it as medical or recreational, but then the retailer has different regulations based on who they then sell it to.
Which makes sense. Any, any product you buy, like if, if you're, you're, you're a reseller or something, you buy it wholesale, you sell it to a final store and they sell it. It's only the taxes on the final purchase of where the product goes, so I understand that makes perfect sense. Just trying to clarify that if, if that, so you're not gonna sell any retail, you don't plan to at all, you plan to just strictly stay with the wholesale.
Yeah, the, the, here's the benefit, right? So when we first were negotiating and talking about the original project, the RMD.
I was after 3% in the beginning.
I, I know, but.
But I got nowhere with that.
It was the title, it was the name. It was called a registered marijuana dispensary, so everybody saw that, just flipped out.
And this is probably not done morphing yet either, but.
Say it again?
Not done morphing yet. They'll change it more, I'm sure.
Well, no, actually, they're changing it in a good way, because now the license we're applying for is specifically marijuana cultivator. And it says you can't sell retail, you can wholesale to retail establishment. The other one, now it's specifically marijuana product manufacturer. Once again, you cannot sell retail, it's a wholesale. So now they define it. So now we're able to say, well, it's, it's a cultivate, it's a, it's a.
So you're probably the best one to ask the opinion on this on. Does that mean that moving forward, would it be your speculation, that's a big word here, that when they move forward marijuana in general, are they gonna separate grow from sell across the board? Or they got, so they're not gonna allow someone to grow and sell unless they ship it to their own place somewhere else to sell? They're not gonna allow it, period?
No, they, they would, but they're separate licenses now. So now, for instance, if I wanted to open a retail dispensary. And in Worcester.
You can't tie 'em together. It's gonna be a separate retail license.
It's a separate license, so I have to go to Worcester, negotiate a community host agreement, go to the CCC, apply for that license. Whereas when we first got the RMD license, it was a vertical, vertically integrated license. That one, those three words, RMD, meant you could do everything. So they've itemized it now, which is.
They're gonna sell more licenses and get more tax, more, more fees out of it. That's why they, that's why the state's doing it. They wanna split it because they can sell three licenses instead of one.
It also helps, though. It helps communities.
Oh, absolutely.
When they create bylaws, they can say, we can have as many cultivators, if that's what they wanted, you know, per state law, and not feel like that's gonna immediately turn into a retail site later. Because that license doesn't allow them to. They've gotta continue to go through the next process, which would again come before us as well as the state to revise the HCA or rewrite any HCA, or just do a second one, because however they're gonna, maybe they're on the other side of town. It doesn't matter. They have to come back before us if they wanna change from cultivator to another step in that license category.
And somebody mentioned at the last meeting we had, and we talked about putting these things on the ballot for the town, you know, election here. That the law says a 3% maximum for a term of five years. But the five years, it was suggested, is that that's just the limit that we can have any contract for. That it was, that it could be renewed after that for five more years. So I don't know if that's the case, if it can be a five-year contract and extended five years again later, or if it is just capped, that you can only get 3% five years, and they can, you know, produce and sell for 30 years.
So we, we asked Attorney, this is specific to this, and we state that question, because Andrew had that question, which was a smart question. He couldn't find any language anywhere that says you can do anything after the five years. Which is why we're saying after those five years, we just, we can revert right back to that original agreement and as long as.
So I, I would expect a further definition from the state on that, though, when this question comes up, to either say, five years is the length of any contract you can have, you can't have one after that in any agreement, or that five years is the length of that agreement and you must renegotiate. I think they're gonna have to clarify that sooner or later, because that's gonna be, you know, if someone's gonna have a facility and the only thing the town can get is, is a contribution because they're gonna wholesale it, then obviously, if that business is gonna be here for 30 years, the town would get some tax for, if it's legit an impact.
No, I disagree, I disagree with that. I really truly do disagree with that. I mean, there, there are no other businesses that hypothetically come to Barry, would have to sit here and even talk about this, negotiate.
Agreed, but we are talking about, we do have to legitimately kinda prove that we're spending it towards those issues. And, and if, if it's, whether it's a drug awareness program or, or security, those issues aren't gonna change. You never know when someone's gonna decide, you know, I'm gonna go try to hold this place up a robbery, do something. So you, you still have to stay prepared for it and allocate some resources to it, maybe not necessarily 3%. But I mean, that, that, that need for security and to be prepared and to have, hopefully, drug awareness and things like that about it never goes away. Just because you've gone past your five years, it doesn't mean that there aren't things that we now have to defund that may be benefiting the public, so.
Sure.
You understand?
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but if somebody was gonna open a restaurant with a liquor license, they're, they're not even talking about this. So, so right now, I mean, if, if it becomes the Wild West, well, then maybe legislation will be amended.
And once again, it's not, it's not, I still won't acquit it to a liquor license, because this isn't just, you know, selling the marijuana. This is growing. It's equivalent to brewing or distilling or forming the liquor, which, which is different, you know, you know, other than the fact that we have some people that do make beer in town now. You're opening up a distillery or other things in, in the production is, is very different than just a liquor license to sell. And that's what I look at here, you know, the cultivation, it does put a target to some people. Hopefully, never. Hopefully, no one ever is inclined to say, let's go try to see what we can steal from there or break in or do whatever.
Well, well, the benefit of what we're doing, if that's a concern, sure, it would be a concern on a, you know, retail dispensary, but the benefit is by the time our product becomes worth anything, it's gone.
But unfortunately, most criminals aren't smart, and they have no clue.
We'll put up signs.
Just trying to get, this is like before last time. I'm trying to get a better comprehension of what we're talking about to fully understand it. I don't wanna walk outta here and feel like I have no clue what we're talking about, so I wanna.
If at any point, I'm, I'll be back for that community host weekend. We'll have a sidewalk after. If you'd encourage, come take a walk up, see, see what it looks like up there, where it is. Not only specific to this project, we'll give you some perspective.
One quick question, and I understand this possibly just due to my ignorance of all the potential taxes that land on commercial properties. It looks like you're identifying something here as property tax?
Yep.
Is there also a real estate tax that's separate? One is like property is the equipment, one is, I just wanna double check, because I thought it's kinda the same basis on solar. Solar is not.
Yeah, real property.
Personal has those different levels of tax, like you.
Yeah, there's a personal property tax, which is what they asked to have excluded. So they were gonna pay real estate tax for the, for the building and the, and the property, but not for the equipment inside. So typically, a business is, is sent out a form to, to list the valuable equipment they own for the company and pay tax on the value of that every year. And they, they've asked to be exempt from that. That was our agreement.
No, is that the current?
I thought, I thought was yours, yeah. We, we said you, there was gonna be, there was gonna be a, a tax on the property for the building value, but not on the equipment inside.
We, we discussed that.
So that's what I mean. I would like to double check to see what applies in case we're just missing one of the numbers of potential revenue.
Yeah.
Cause that also may alleviate some of the concerns in year six on, because if there is personal property tax as well as the real estate property tax, and then the potential for the 30,000 HCA, we may still be looking at the supplemental income from this that covers the burden on the town. You know, as well as the potential outreach programs or other things we could help fund. I'm only bringing it up because I'd just like to double check to see what might apply, so that before we even get into the agreement, we both know and we make sure we address it properly.
It does say that there's a lot of assumed numbers in, in even this one as far as building value and proposed tax rate when you're going out any more than three years, so.
I can, I can.
Exactly. A lot of it's the best you can do sitting here today.
I can recall exactly what meeting we discussed this and paraphrase my concerns that were that, you know, if we don't have some sort of revenue for the town, there's nothing really in it for the town. We, you know, we're trying to look out for the town's interest. And Mr. Cranston's concern was that we would bankrupt you by asking for any percentage of, of the money from this. And I said, well, we, we don't get anything from it. He said, of course you do. You're getting property tax. You're gonna get, he said something, the neighborhood of $20,000 or $30,000 of property tax every year. And this is why I said we talked about that. But I do recall reading in there that the property tax is one thing, but the, the equipment and value of the, of the things inside would be exempt from that. Pardon me?
You said you recall reading in there, reading where?
Someplace when we were going through this, with the discussion with Attorney Cranston, was, was the fact that we wouldn't tax the, the typical business equipment inside.
But there's nothing in our, our agreement, reading references that, so I'm not.
It was part, one of our discussions.
A little confusion, because we were looking for the percentage. They were exempt from taxing because they're gonna be a medical facility, et cetera. And then they did offer, we don't have to, but we would pay the property tax? Cause I believe you said you were in a position where you did, one, that or the personal property, you didn't have to, but you weren't saying you wouldn't?
No, 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 no. We, we made it clear we have to be forming a not-for-profit.
Oh, but you weren't creating the one that was exempt?
We weren't a 501(c)(3). We were still subject of property tax.
Right, so I recall discussions that may be clouding my memory.
So it's no different than, than leader. We're gonna build a building and you're gonna tax us, or you tax leader on your property. If you, I can't recall any language that talks about the fixtures and value of those, but I guess that would be the assessors who would.
Right, and that real number will come out. That's not something that they make up.
And whether that is exempt, you know, the assumption was at the time that everything was exempt because it was not-for-profit and, and that there was gonna be a volunteer to contribute the property tax. But apparently, if that's not the case, then whatever the tax.
We were real clear from the beginning, very first meeting, we're not a 501(c)(3).
Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the first several meetings, so I was trying to play catch-up quite a bit on it. But there was, there was discussion about that back and forth, and that was my takeaway from it. But that was just the gist, is there would be property tax, but I understood not equipment, and maybe that's not applicable. Maybe there is a tax for equipment, but that's, once again, that's the assessor's job to evaluate and deal with that. Right, it's got nothing to do with what we decide here, that would be a standard tax if it applies.
Okay, so do you need, yeah, I'll be right with you. Do you need any thing from us tonight?
No, no, I'm just, I wanted to.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, in this case here, it's the most I can, I can offer on that. And then, you know, there is, I would like to have that application.
Okay.
So we could start operating this year.
I think we've just gotta check, check the changes against the contract, because, I mean, it lists that the things you wanted to. Instead of section this, that, I just wanna look at exactly what's overriding.
No, I have that. I can send that to.
Couple of comments back. Okay, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that as a public health entity, Q Drug cannot take money from an organization that is doing something that we would have to be obviously on the opposing side of. So like, we cannot take funds from CPC. If the town of Barry or any of the other towns want to support something that is such as you've mentioned, we'd be more than happy to help you to organize that or to support that. But we can't take funds in any way, shape, or form from an organization that is doing something that we are, as public health people, working against.
Even though it's considered a medical facility, that's the whole of tax exemptions, because it's considered a medical facility.
No, it, it won't be, it won't be that at all anymore.
Oh, once, once the change.
You'll be a wholesaler where he sends it to anybody that will retail.
The only, the only time it's.
So we'll have to find a way to make that work without going directly there. And this is why I said be creative.
Just to clarify, the only time it's now distinguished is at the point of sale, point of retail.
Which will have nothing to do with this location, as the covenant says.
And this is where, you know, I suggested, I understand that there might be ways to get creative, to use the funds. Here, it's rural up that there, you know, maybe the police need to.
Needless to say, everything goes into the general fund. So how we spend our 10 million is how we spend our 10 million. And that's, nothing more needs to be said.
It just has to be a really separate thing, like there can't be anything where it says supportive, or this was sponsored by CPC or whatever. Can't touch it.
Yeah, but I, I don't see why the board couldn't say, you know, since we have some extra money now, we could use some of our town money to fund Q Drug in this. And now that we've had money freed up because of. And now that we've had money freed up because of whatever reason, we can afford to use town money for that.
There's just gotta be.
But, but that would.
Very separated, otherwise.
But yeah, but that would actually link it through, so we couldn't, because without linking it through.
And that just don't make sense.
Dennis, you had a comment, then I'll get to the other one, okay?
Just so the board is aware, two of us on the planning board have been attending meetings with the Cannabis Control Commission in a public format. This past Saturday, myself and Doug were at Holy Cross College for classes run by the Cannabis Control Commission, who had stated that they had made numerous changes to the rules that were already on the books, and those are coming out, either they just did or coming out very soon. There's quite a few changes in their language of the laws that they're gonna be implementing, cause it's been going back and forth, back and forth. They did say the application process does start on the first of April, and I believe the licensing will start either June first or June thirtieth.
July first.
I can't recall. With that said, I was disappointed with a few things that the Control Commission mentioned with regulations as far as localities of dispensaries. One of which, I didn't quite get an answer from them that I was hoping for, but it's no different than say with alcohol selling like pack of stores. Can't be near a church, can't be near a school, can't be near daycare center, there's a multiple. The new rules have a five hundred foot buffer, and it is from K through twelve. Doesn't matter if it's near a church, doesn't matter if it's near a daycare, it's K through twelve only. Those are the only things that are a scoop, which I found a little, I didn't like it, I'll put it that way. Why does it change from one thing to another? And they couldn't give me an answer for it. Whether it's with the church side of it, if it's a separation between church and state, I don't know. They really couldn't answer me with that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can write the bylaws however we want.
They did bump it from three hundred to five hundred feet, so. I just want you to know that members of our committee are, you know, going to these meetings, and it's, there's a whole slew of information that should be coming out and print. It may be already on their website, but, and I do recall, and I'm checking the number, cause I don't have my notes in front of me. There's some kind of an important letter coming to the town clerk that they're gonna want an answer from before. First, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it should be here soon. So I just wanted to give you an update that we are going to. And it was very informative.
I appreciate you attending, I think it's, it's good that you're getting that information.
We had another question in the back.
Yes, you are officials that represent the town of Barry. You were elected by the town of Barry, am I correct?
Yeah.
And you represent the citizens of Barry.
Yep.
And my question is actually, I know quite a few people in Barry, and they are totally outraged by this. And this has been going on, and we need to know why the selectmen just decided to do this without having a town meeting. People wanna know why they didn't have a chance to vote on it. What they can do about it. People are talking about writing petitions to stop this. It's right there, right across the street from, well, down across the street from Kristen Church, and everyone's calling it a dope factory, okay? And the people that I've spoken with, it's like, okay, there's plant in there, it's for medical, okay? Now they're gonna be selling it for recreational. How do we know there's not gonna be false walls in there and poppy plants? That's not what I'm saying, that's just what I heard. And the, from the other facilities that go, have been up, I guess they have these domed roofs that go open. And they open them up at night to let the moisture out, so the plants can breathe and then close them in the daytime. In the summertime, South Barry is gonna smell nothing but stunk. There's been many, many communities have done nothing to complain about it. And I would like to know why it did not go to a town meeting and you gentlemen selected to vote on it without having your citizens represented.
Okay, I think we've taken an awful long.
I know, I've been in a hospital and I'm late on this, but this is my question, is again.
Okay, we could end, you speak on that, I think, but Matt was waving his hand first, so I don't know if you wanna do it or let him do it, but. He was asking first, so I won't.
I would just like to start with, the state put it on the ballot twice, once for medical, then once for recreational, and the town voted for both. The town was more than a majority for both. I believe it was nearly sixty percent for medical and low fifties for recreational. I don't remember the specific numbers, but the town voted then to allow the state to allow this and create the laws for it. Then we actually were approached by some, and we agreed to put on this town meeting ballot at least three key things that we thought were the worst concern, well, the biggest concerns of the town regarding retail locations, dispensary type locations, and the point-of-sale places primarily, as well as onsite use. I think that was the third of the three ballot items. We put strictly on the ballot for the town to vote on again, so in other words, we're allowing you to vote on it a second time after you would, as a town, not individually, already approved. So we are still trying to make sure the town has a voice in this process. But when it comes to what they're asking to do here, and what has been presented before this board, it was never intended to create an onsite retail. It was never intended to create a traffic area where people were coming there to purchase and then drive away. So it was reducing the, everybody come to Barry to get it, because that was not what we agreed to in the host community agreement. We said, no point-of-sale. You can't sell it here.
Understood.
So we were trying to work within even what maybe, cause at that time it was a medical facility. So the thirty-five or forty percent minority that didn't want it, we were still giving them more by saying, well, we're not gonna sell it right there. So we're even, so we're still trying to listen to the town. But there is a, maybe a less vocal majority that is saying something different. Because they already voted on it that way, and they believe I voted on it once, I don't need to keep coming, I'm guessing.
Well, yeah, that was.
But we also, during this whole process, we went through four months, five months of meetings with them, constantly allowing people to, we, we didn't come before and then execute an agreement in two weeks the first time this came before us, so. There was plenty of time for, and don't get me wrong, we had a lot of voice, we, but we were still getting both sides of the story. A group of people that supported and a group that didn't. So I think we tried to find the balance still within that, to see if we can find something that would work for both the groups. So we're trying to represent the town, but we have two differing opinions coming from the town. So it, it's not as easy as just, I realize some people just don't want it at all. But there's a lot of other people apparently that do want it, maybe even want more than we're willing to let them have. So we're trying to find that middle ground where we can, now I do believe, I don't know what the current regulations state, but there were certain developments where you couldn't have these facilities that would open up and air out all night and create the whole neighborhood and smell. Or if you did, there were certain authorities that could come in and shut you down for doing it until you created it. We gotta double check what those rules are. You guys might be more familiar with it, but like you said, whatever happened in the last three weeks before they made the final issue, who knows what got cut out and what didn't, but we gotta double review that, cause that might be a bylaw we wanna add ourselves if the state didn't put it in, is, you know, if we're getting an issue that's affecting the neighborhood, we're gonna have to review it and see how we can better contain it.
Yes.
But we gotta make sure we know how to word that, because there's also, there's a balance, and I'm not even saying that I would deny someone's thoughts about, hey, I smell something. And every day they say they smell something, but every day the facility's locked up tight. And someone else might not smell that's a hundred yards closer, now you're getting into, I'm not saying he said, she said, but I don't know how better to describe that type of situation where some people will be more sensitive, some won't. And then we've gotta figure out the balance of, is it something that, how consistent, how pervasive is the issue? And then how do we go about working with the owner to make sure they resolve it in a way that works with? And so we gotta work with the planning board and developing these bylaws and figure out how we can best control that. And sometimes it means don't get too tight in how you word it, cause then it locks you out of the ability to do what you need to do. So we got some more steps to go through on that, and you'll have several bylaws, I'm sure, on the annual town meeting article related to marijuana, whether it's resulting from the ballot questions on the April second vote. Or if it's just relating to all the other bylaws that we think we need to add to better protect the town, or how we would work that, so we're not done, is what I'm saying.
I do have a point B.
Yeah.
All right, you were talking about, was it twenty percent tax to the state, three percent tax to the town?
For retail, which we are not necessarily discussing with him.
Okay.
Well CPC, I should say.
All right, security measures. What type of security measures are gonna be? The full police department, okay, they are going, as far as I would be concerned, are gonna have to have law patrol officers up there, depending on what type of security do they have, sixteen-foot fence, lots of D.O.I.A. You know, with another ten-foot fence inside electrified. The police department has enough to do without having to worry about someone going marijuana, people trying to sneak in under the fence. You know, getting in there, sniffing what they have to sniff, or I have no idea how they cut it out, but there's going to be, I don't know how to put it.
An increased burden?
Activities that are more than legal going on up there, okay? I know the area. I know people, how people can sneak in up there, okay? I'm familiar with the area. I've walked the area. And the police department, they are not able to get into these certain spots, okay? Is the taxes gonna fund the police department to put extra police officers on duty? Especially when they have the, I don't know, was it ten, twenty-ton trucks coming out? With, you know, full of marijuana buds or whatever you call them? Who's gonna pay for that? Is that three percent tax paying for it? Or is the state gonna kick back for the police department for pay details overtime? Who is gonna help out the police department? That is a big concern for me, and also a big concern for the people who live in South Barry. Are there any answers to that?
I, I think that something that we didn't.
Security, that's, that's the law.
We did discuss, when we talked about this, we did discuss light, sound and odor discipline when we were talking about the facility. And those, those things were addressed specifically. From my understanding is it's gonna be a closed facility. They're not gonna exchange outside air, outside soil, outside water, unless the failsafe for carbon monoxide or something is what I understood, but I don't know. You could better elaborate on the, on the opening roof scenario. I don't understand that.
Yeah, that's, that's, they make these new greenhouses that their roofs retract to allow for, you know, high humidity situations, so. That would, I think would be probably, you know, overseen by the Board of Health or the DEP if there were, you know, if there were smell or noise concerns.
We, we did have that concern in the, in the discussions when Mr. Cranston was here.
Terms of security, it's spelled out in the CM Act, the, the regulations that the state has put out, what type of security they have to have. I believe they have to have people onsite twenty-four seven.
No, we don't have to do that, of course.
I thought they did.
It's pretty considerable as far as, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty extensive.
And what type of?
And I'm pretty familiar with the area. I know the area probably just as well as you do.
I know, but are they gonna be security guards from Wackenhot, or are they gonna be?
I think he wants to protect his property and product.
How trained are they gonna be to secure the site?
I'm sure that, that he wants to protect his product and his facility. More than any of us are worried about his product and facility. It's his money and his investment. The state has light, laid out the guidelines, the qualifications they're gonna have to have. And the same thing with why we're waiting to make bylaws, we're waiting to see where the state falls in these to, to help us be guided through our bylaws. As far as allowing these facilities, the state's actually said that if your town voted to pass these marijuana laws, the select board has no power to prevent recreational marijuana. Only the town could do that by vote. And we could say, let's say, let's say we had a thousand voters turned out and, and six hundred voted for the marijuana. Sure, that's, you know, fifteen percent of the people in town that approved it. I can't help it that the other two and a half thousand residents didn't come out and voice their opinion. And if they're against it, and this is a very well-publicized issue on the ballot, I mean, and if, if they're opposed to it, and let's say there was two thousand people opposed to it, then shame on them for not getting out and voicing their opinion, because we have to go by the public ballot. We have to go by the, the, you know, the sampling that came out and, and wanted to put their, their, you know, thoughts forward and, and cast a ballot on it. It was roughly sixty percent said, we want it. We want the medical, we want the recreational. And as you said, we are elected officials, and I'm someone who doesn't care for marijuana. Don't smoke it, don't have any need for it, don't care for it, don't like the smell of it. But I'm also someone that said that the day I sit in this chair and try to say no to any of this, cause it's what I want, as opposed to what the people voted for, that I'm a hypocrite, and I won't do that. So I try to make sure it's done reasonably and it's done safely, that we conform to the guidelines. I try to get money for the town, not cause I'm against Dean of the Pot, but because I think the town needs something for any of these businesses in town. And that's my job to sit here and be the jerk and say, like I did on Hardwick last week, pay something towards the senior center. That's my job.
I'm not calling you a jerk. I agree.
But I, but I'm saying.
What are you saying?
That the people said they want it. I've been elected to do what they want, and, and this is it. And I can't go by how, I don't care how many people you talk to that say they don't, I have to go by the vote. And the vote was, we want marijuana, so we're trying to do it in a responsible way, and we did have a lot of meetings on it. And I tied them up a lot, because I came in to office probably two months into this, so I kinda held things up to play catch-up on a lot of this stuff. And I made this drag out probably longer than I had to, because I wanted to get, you know, fully informed before we move forward. So I, I think, I'd be really surprised if people had a true perception that we've been irresponsible with it.
No, it's not the point, it's, well, the, I'm retired.
Mm-hmm.
I'm old, and I am around older people.
That's a relative term.
Yeah. We're sorry. But those are the type of people that, you know, I have been speaking with, and they're like, we need to get some kind of petition. Are they wasting their time?
Yes, for that they are, because.
They're gonna petition with them.
Yes and no. We have another vote coming up. We have another public ballot coming up in April, and it's gonna have questions. Should we allow or not allow basically the sale of marijuana in town at a retail shop? Should we allow the use of it in a cafe-style shop? And should we allow home delivery from within town limits? Now, the reality is, home delivery's gonna be allowed, so if somebody wants to pick up a phone and call for marijuana, they can come from wherever and deliver it here. That's within the limits of the law. Are we gonna allow them to deliver from here is one of the questions in the ballot. So they have a chance to come back out and say, you know what, we don't want shops in town, and they can stop that end of it. The license is now split. He no longer has a medical facility to cultivate, grow and, and sell. He, he is a grow facility and he can only wholesale. He cannot sell it anymore the way the law is, unless he goes and gets another license and starts this whole dang process again to get a sell license, which is gonna be different. So what we have is a greenhouse that's gonna grow plants. They're not roses, they're not geraniums, they're not apple trees. It's gonna be pot plants. And they're gonna be, and they're gonna be sold wholesale, and that, and that's what we have from what the public voted for. And, and I, I could, no matter what I think of this stuff, I'm never gonna sit here and go against what the public wants, because I feel that's the responsibility of this chair, is to try to listen to and do the things the public want. And when it's under such a public ballot as this, when it was unbelievably well advertised, I mean, let's face it, this was all over the news before this vote came out. So to say people weren't informed of what was coming. So to say people weren't informed of what was coming forward, um, you know, there's people that question just putting these other issues back in the ballot. But my feeling is, and personally, I didn't necessarily know that it meant you had to have these in your town. Um, and the state said we have to allow this growth in town. And, you know, if the town wants to say we're not gonna have other parts, that's fine, we can't. But we weren't gonna be hypocrites and say, no, we're not gonna let them grow in town, because clearly people want that right.
How do we get people my age and, we'll say above, to find out about this? It's not televised?
About our meetings or just about the topic?
About the vote, the upcoming vote. A lot of the elder people, well, I shouldn't say elder, people my age and above, don't know a lot about this.
Okay.
And ones that I've spoken with are like outraged. They're like, Barry is a historical town. We do not want this town known and represented as a dope town. And that's exactly the exact word.
Neither do I.
A dope town.
You do know that every, every year in April, we have our annual election, that, that we'll elect our town offices, e- every year.
I know, and...
And then that's, and that's when this vote takes place. We also have, um, our town meeting, you know, the end of June, early July timeframe. And we usually have a special town meeting, and this year we'll have some, um, preliminary elections for, for state and federal offices, I believe, right?
Oh, that's in September.
September, so there's, you know, but these, these are known election times. And before those election times, I don't know exactly how far forward, but very soon, we'll be releasing the list of what is up to be voted on.
It's already been, it's already out.
So it's already out. So anybody who intends to go vote or wants to pay any attention at all to town politics, all you have to do is research whether it's in the newspaper or posted in these town buildings and locations, what's being voted on. And, and they're, and they're listed. And every, everybody has their own public and civic duty and responsibility to understand when your local votes are and, and how to find these documents out. We can't go knocking everyone's door and say, oh, we, we have an election, just, I know, like every year before.
Well, I know.
Because we do, and it's coming every year. And there's different articles on there every year. And if people have concerns for stuff like this happening, they really, I...
They don't find out till it's too late.
But you gotta do your diligence and get out there and vote. I tell everyone, you gotta go vote. You can't be upset how something turns out if you didn't get off your chair and go vote.
And like, well, I just wanted to finish about...
Three hundred people show to our town meetings out of thirty-six hundred. Three.
I just wanted to finish about my thing about, uh, people my age, you know, down in Barry, you know. Get, no, I came up here from Worcester years ago, to get away from Worcester, okay? Worcester was getting bad.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I've got a nine-year-old daughter. Don't want her anywhere around dope.
Yep.
And everyone that I speak with, it's like, it's the gateway drug. You start with marijuana, and it goes to the pills, and it goes to the heroin. And I know that has nothing to do with this, but I just wanted to put my true sense in about that.
I, I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you for listening to me.
I, I can assure you though, that we, we, we've asked a lot of questions about it, and this facility should be safe and secure. This facility, we not be selling marijuana to property, to anyone here on property. Um, it will be taken care of, and, and we were very satisfied, because we, we, I wish it came to them. We really, we were not gentle on poor Mr. Cranston coming back and forth. We had him pulling his hair out at times, because we kept trying to ensure the public safety parts of this, that we're not gonna sell any here, exactly how they're gonna control it, when they're making, you know, other things that were byproducts, how it's gonna be done, what safety implements are gonna be done. So I really, really believe that we're gonna have minimal and no public impact down there. I really believe that, and that was our goal when we set it forward. Um, and as you said, the land covenant's set up, so they cannot ever sell from there. They can never change that. That's done. He can wholesale somewhere else who sells it. They can't retail it to anyone.
Well, the police department, can there be a certain thing set aside for them, okay? Because they tried to get a police cruiser a month ago, and someone got up there complaining about, you know, we could spend it on this and that, spend it on this and that. And police cruisers go through so much work, okay? The police department needs to have the equipment and the manpower, especially in something like this, especially with trailer trucks, they will, you know, I don't know about hijacking around here, but...
I would be shocked if any trailer trucks hauling out of there. I, I don't think we're gonna haul trailer trucks out of there. But, but no, certainly when we're talking about three percent contribution towards public impact, if we said, okay, we're gonna at least have the, a, a police drive through there twice a day, we can add that mileage and look at the impact and say, you know what, that justifies spending some of that three percent on a four-wheel drive vehicle to get up there and, and do that. And it, and it, it might say it justifies, okay, if we're gonna dedicate those journeys, so many hours a day, and we just did this looking at Berry Falls Dam. A certain amount of time and money, therefore, we can allocate some of that money towards a police fund to compensate for the police time we spend there. So we, we can pull monies, but we have to justify it. We, we can't just say, oh, we're just saying it for the police. We, we have to justify...
Well, I'm saying, oh, the police, but eh...
But we have to justify it, and we, we will do that, but we haven't even, this is news to us. That's a, that's a great offer, and it's great news to us. But we have to talk about how we're gonna use it, absolutely, and I think that's one way. You know, that these millions it's gonna bring into us.
And the more police present seen at that facility, if and when it's done, won't be ventured.
And this is new for everyone, and it's gonna, you know, take its own life and grow, and the needs will determine what we have to do, you know, what, what happens as time goes on. We may be, may need more, we may need that, less presence there. I, I don't know. We can't know, but we are preparing for it. And the, the generous offer of the three percent, which he doesn't have to do, um, will give us some fun. He's trying to be helpful to give us the ability to do it. It's all the states allowed him. The state has said absolutely no more. So that, yes, to say, I'm gonna willingly give you, but I don't have to, I'm gonna give you everything the state says I can to the max.
Three cents on the dollar, and the state gives twenty cents on the dollar.
Call your state representatives.
But I'm saying, when he's offering to give us the max he's allowed to, without us even asking for it or fighting for it, that's, that's generous. You can take up to this amount. All right, I'm just gonna give it to you. Don't ask for it.
No, he has to.
No, he doesn't.
No, three percent's the max. He couldn't negotiate it saying, I only want to give you one and a half percent. And then we would sit at the table until we agreed on it. Now, he's got a timeline that helps him to just offer three percent, but it is what it is.
The most we could hope to get through hours of negotiation would be three percent.
Political negotiation, right?
The most we could hope to get out of negotiation, the most we can ever hope to get is three percent for five years. That's the, that, that, that's the, that's the max. That's a max, a state where he says, you can have any place from nothing to this. But you can't get a penny past that. And he walked in the door and said, here, take it.
And then after five years, boom, nothing.
No, that's not true. That's not what he's allowed for in here. He's actually made allowances for that as well, but...
And then...
The contract is only five years, and...
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you sit down?
All right, you can sit. Don't, don't, don't stand up.
I'm, I'm looking to turn this away from that subject. Is that okay?
No, I appreciate the input, though. I just wanna say, I appreciate the input, just...
Um, in terms of the three percent five years, my understanding from the CCC and having been to a number of meetings with them, is that their goal is to be able to review at the end of five years what the impact is upon the community. And that doesn't say that at the end of that five years, that there will no longer be any host community agreements.
Correct.
But that at the end of that five years, they will throughout the state reevaluate whether or not three percent is high enough, or whether or not it could be increased at that point, looking at how broad of a thing.
We did talk about that, and what we said is really, it kind of leaves it off. It doesn't say you can or can't. It's, it's very ambiguous after that, so...
Yeah, so just at the end of your negotiations, you might want, like, you want to make sure that you're clarifying that it will be renegotiated at the end of five years.
If we're allowed to. They may determine that we're not allowed to renegotiate after, and that's the thing, we don't know. There's no determination.
Well, we can make sure the host community agreement that we may enter in the next week, couple of weeks or a month or whatever, make sure that it's clear between the two parties that that is the case. In five years, we will reevaluate the state regulations, et cetera, and we may need to re-enter a, a new agreement or revise, et cetera. So we just gotta put the wording in, so that it gives us that option in five years. That's all.
I guess the, the state will determine that. They'll review it and say, four years, everybody's gonna know.
Right, it's the same thing, saying we don't know what the bylaws are gonna do when they come out versus what we want, so...
What I would like, if possible, in order to get to something that we could review and appropriately negotiate or discuss or sign by April second, means once again, we need something to review at least a week prior to that, from you guys.
You mean the amendment?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I...
It's right there.
The whole thing.
Yes.
No, I wanna see the whole...
Oh, yeah, the whole thing, that's, that's the amendment to sections, it's not the whole thing.
I want the whole thing rewritten.
That's saying, replaces section with section.
And what I'm requesting is, provided as a Word doc, track changes. This is what we agreed on. This is what we're changing. So it's very clear what parts are changed, omitted, not omitted. So it's an easy review. We know exactly how it's being affected, and then we can take a look. And that time, it also allows us a little time, if we want, within that week, we can go to the people like the planning board that have also been going to the CCC stuff. We can see what, just in case, we didn't interpret something, or maybe they interpret something different than you, we can say, this is what we're, and we have a chance to try to still meet that goal.
I appreciate it.
But I, I wouldn't wanna see it that Friday before, and then go into Monday night thinking, ah, I didn't have a chance to talk to the planning board. I didn't have, and I wouldn't wanna go into it that way. I don't, I don't like that at all. And if I did happen that way, I would ask the table to the next meeting.
Have you met my wife?
Once or twice, yes.
We, we wound up tabling this a couple of times because of that last time. We didn't, we didn't see the change.
Just as you asked for.
All right, and that's fine, because that makes it that simple, so I know exactly what we're looking at, changing. And then we can make any discussions, calls to other people and say, what we're seeing, what do you think, how do you reply? That's all.
I asked to see what it was replacing, but to see the whole thing is smarter. I like that.
Thank you. I really, I know, I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks again. Don't, don't mean to bug you in questions, but I want to understand it. And that's what I was saying. I wanted to see, not just, it says replace the section. I say, I wanna see the sections it's replacing, but to see the whole document all the ways.
Sometimes it's so hard for me to cease, or reference, or change this paragraph. It's like...
Chief, did you have anything you wanted to bring up with us?
Nope.
No.
Very...
We thank you for your perseverance on the earlier in the evening. Thank you.
And I truly meant it. I was not trying to judge the actions of your officers. I was just trying to lay the... I'm sorry if it came off like I was. That was not my intent.
Okay, let's get back to...
We take the dangerous designation pretty seriously, and last time it came up, I was, I was against it, dead against it because of the situation, but it was a very different situation. And I'm, I'm always still protective of the dogs.
Back to the senior workoff regulations.
You might want to stick around for this, Frank.
He said you might wanna.
Senior workoff.
But do we want to do it?
I saw the revised draft. It included my last request to...
I think that is, that was the only holdup we have is that, so I will not object if...
Uh, I would make a motion to accept the last draft that was submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
Discussion, hearing none, or call for a vote in favor?
I, and thank you very much for the effort you put in to get that together, working with all the parties.
Wage authorization for the...
Here we go again.
All right. Joe Hood.
So I provided you guys with that, uh, the letter earlier today, that kind of outlined what their redistribution plan is, um, to show that it is a net cost savings to the town, even if the individual decided to take the full impact benefits.
I'd just applaud you of the board.
I'd make a motion to accept the reorganization of the positions and therefore the appointment of Joe Hood to the, wait, wait, I think I know it, library assistant benefited position.
Is the second one right, too? Was there another person?
Uh, there's, uh... Further down, but yeah.
Were we moving him to a benefited position? Were we making his a benefited position?
Making his.
Making his a benefited position.
Making a benefited position, removing a non-benefited part-time, and then taking him from his original part-time into the benefited position. So it's kind of a...
So we're, whoa, so we're removing one or both part-times?
One part-time. Math still works. The previous part-timers hours, that's what this is.
I know. We had two previous part-timers, as I understood. And we were going to say, we're not using one of them, so we're gonna make him benefited. So if we're not gonna use one, and we're gonna make him benefited, then we don't need the other part-time hours either. That, that was, that was my holdup on the last one. If, you see what I'm saying?
Should be...
We had, we had four, and now we're gonna have three. We had four assistants that were all getting twelve hours a week.
Right.
Now we've got three. One is getting twenty-five hours, one's getting nine, and one's getting four.
And the, uh, the idea was, we were gonna bump his hours up, because it was gonna alleviate a position. He's moving out of one of them. It's his position we're eliminating, so we still have the other three.
No, we don't. Look at, look at the, uh, this page, the first page.
That's this one?
Well, this column right here says one thirty-four, eight thirty-three, total of PTO impact?
Yep.
Okay. If you look to the left, you'll see the very first column, four library assistant positions, all getting twelve hours each.
Yep.
Go to the next page. If you look at that position column, you see three library assistants rather than four. One of them's getting twenty-five hours, which is like combining two of the part-timers, twelve and twelve gets a twenty-four. This is close. But the other twelve-hour ones are now dropped to nine and four hours apiece.
So, so we are actually eliminating two of those positions and then creating the benefited one. So we did eliminate, so we did eliminate to...
You're right, you're right. I see what you mean now.
We eliminated, and that's what I would, I didn't see the second page. So we, we eliminated the, the two that he's filling and made a new benefited one, which is what I asked for last time, because they came in without asking for that. I said, what's to stop from trying to fill it up?
And I saw that meeting on TV, and we were on the same...
Because I thought that's what you were talking about, so, and the impact of that, the other thing I said is, if they draw full benefits, we're saying the impact benefited is still beneficial?
Yes, um, because even this shows, if everybody who is entitled to benefits took the full vote, that is really the only situation that impacts the town negatively, and only by, um, a margin of about six thousand dollars overall. That, that including all...
Okay, what I'm gonna say though, I'll, I'll back up a second here, uh, because we reduced the other hours. So we had the total of a hundred and twenty-four thou, well, we really had thirty, thirty-two thousand for the assistants. And we're cutting it to...
No, we had forty-eight hundred. Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. Say that again. You're looking at dollars?
With the assistants, yeah, with the assistants, we had a total of, if you call them all eight thousand, we had roughly thirty-two thousand. And now we're gonna have twenty-two, thirty-seven, thirty-eight to, um, forty-three, eight, forty-five, forty-six...
Remember, it's just the last three positions, starting at fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, forty-six, forty-six, twenty, twenty-three and change. So it is, it is less, depending what the benefits come out to be for that position.
So the, the guaranteed impact, so a su, you know...
The minimum.
The minimum impact is fifteen hundred dollars, because of vacation and sick. But again, he doesn't actually get that vacation time until next year, when he actually accrues it. So you're talking about less than half, you know, a little bit more than half of that as a sick time benefit he's gonna get in that first year. And then go into that next one is, you know, if he take, if he decides to take that, uh, single family plan, it's a five thousand dollar impact. Now, let's say he gets married, has, has kids, decides to go to a family plan, that's a twelve thousand dollar impact. So you can't really combine those two. It's either a five thousand impact or twelve thousand, twelve thousand impact. But the one thing I, I was gonna do today, but I, I didn't get, was to just try to figure out, of the three people who have the access to the benefits, only one of those three is actually taking that optional benefit. So, you know, and I'm not sure whether or not that's a family benefit or a single, or, or a single impact. So the overall total net impact is not exactly, but it just shows that, let's say everybody took the full family vote that was entitled to it, that's what the one seventy-seven would be. And that is really the only situation that negatively impacts the town, because if everybody took the single plan, it'd be, it'd still be a less of a financial impact than what it would be under the current...
Well, specifically...
And in a way, I'm just sorry, I'm just throwing the caveat out real quick with the library budget thing and the whole max, minimum two or two and a half percent increase to stay in the... max, minimum two or two and a half percent increase, to stay in the state circulation certification group or whatever. They're going to increase by 6,000 in their budget anyway. So we could say, that's what you increase your budget by. If, if we went to the maximum benefited, and it went up by 6,000, I think doesn't their budget?
Well, that doesn't really go into their, it doesn't really go into their circ, into their circulation costs.
No, but it goes, our requirement is we have to fund a minimum of 2% to their budget as an increase every year, and if we don't, they lose a lot of their state benefits that come with being a library.
Right, right, right.
So they're, they're getting that increase anyway, this is just something where we can say, that's where you got to spend some of your increase, if it ends up reaching the max. Just throwing it out.
Like I said, the, the four positions basically, unbenefited, they were paying, were, you know, $32,000. The positions that are left, the two assistants in that, um, with the 1,500 are going to come out to be 25 and a half thousand. So we're about 6,500 better off, unless he takes the benefits. Now, the single medical plan is 51, it will still leave us 1,400 better off. If it winds up being a family plan, um, then we're going to lose by 6,000, $5,500.
But the town also carries contingencies in its annual budget for these situations, because people do, even in the benefiting positions, jump around in plans.
Right. But, but I'm satisfied that, yes, if, if at least up to the single plan is, is, is taken, it's still beneficial, I'm happy with that change. And like I said, if he does go to a, a family medical and it costs us 5,500, they'd have to just try to absorb that out of the funding increase, we know we're going to give them what they need to keep their, their statute, so I'm, I'm happy with it as well, so.
I would make a motion to accept the, or approve the appointment of Joe Hood to the new benefited library assistant position.
With these changes to the schedule.
With the changes to the library organizational chart.
You have a second?
Second the motion.
Yep, Dennis?
I've known Joe since he was in kindergarten, couldn't get a better kid.
I change my motion.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that, it was just, it was just, um, the way they were doing it, there was, there was four, four slots, so if we let him bump his hours, it's nothing to stop those three slots and him getting benefits, and we open ourselves up to say, hey, the slot's there, we're going to fill it, and, and, you know, we just wanted to make sure we did it right. So if you wanted to make him benefit, we do it, but balance the money, so.
Okay, I'll call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Sometimes it take us a while to work it out, but we get there. I hope we're where it belongs to be, I hope it's done right.
We have an appointment, appointment to the IAC, Joe Brown and Tom George?
Yep, so.
What's IAC?
Insurance Advisory Committee. Yeah, so Dana Stoddard had recently just left the DPW as of last Friday, he was our, the insurance representative for the, for the DPW, so they had to make a quick appointment, because we do have a vote coming up this, this Thursday, for impact changes that would affect the retirees, so they do have to take a vote on that. It's relative to, to the medics plan that they're, that they're offering and some future changes, and whether or not they want to take early action on it. So they have to, they, we have to have a quorum for that meeting, for them to take a vote. Right now, with Officer Snow leaving, the police didn't have a representative, uh, the chief was interested in filling that role, but then in looking at the, at, um, chapter 32, is it 32B that governs it, said that it has to be a member of the police union that represents them. So Joe Brown stepped up to be that representative, so we needed an appointment from the board, and then they need to swear in before the meeting on person.
So we appointing or approving the appointment?
We, you are appointing them to those positions, they're, they're coming to you requesting appointment.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint both Joseph Brown from the Police Department and Tom George from the DPW as representatives for the.
Insurance Advisory.
Insurance Advisory Committee.
I second that.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, or call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Appointment to the Inspector of Animals.
Yep, we got the letter from the Department of Agriculture. Shad has been the animal inspector for the past few years since Tony Kukas has had resigned. I did contact Shad, he's interested, he came in and filled, signed his end of it, so you guys need to make the appointment.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'll look for the appropriate motion.
Make a motion to appoint Shad Wells as the Inspector of Animals for Berry.
I second that.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, or call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we got to approve our use of the town property for insight, right? And they want to use the town hall on July 7th from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, that is a Saturday. For diversity training, you'll have approximately 65 people in attendance, they'll serve a light breakfast and lunch.
Any conflicts at the time? And make a motion, we approve the use of the town hall for insight meditation for July 7th for their function.
Okay, I'll look for a second.
Second that.
Okay, discussion, hearing none, or call for a vote, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some correspondence.
I just have one more thing on here, excess property for the Police Department.
Oh, God, yeah, I checked it off.
Yeah, so now we're doing, you know, the police are fully out of here, and we're doing kind of renovations to their space, we have a lot of stuff to get rid of. So before we get rid of anything, I want, I was wondering if you guys would be willing to do just a blanket declaration of excess property of anything that we've come across that the police have deemed no value to them.
What type of things are we talking about?
Desk radios.
Chairs.
Chairs, um.
Old file cabinets.
Yeah.
Old, like office desk sorters and.
Print, you know, printers, phones.
Can we, can we put it off?
We can put it off, I just wanted to see.
I'm just thinking, let the other departments have at it if they want it, all, everyone, fire, police.
Yep, I, yep, yep, Fire Chief came up, he actually went through all the flyer stuff with us.
DPW too, senior center.
Everybody.
Everybody, everybody.
Committees?
I mean, the, we, the, the admins and stuff of the committees were able to come in.
I just want to make sure.
I'd rather make a list and then send the list to the committees and see if they could just review it, at least the ones that meet regularly.
Because then they want, there may be a place, if somebody needs to have a drawer, we can lock, and they can put some files away, do some, that's all. Otherwise, I have no problem disposing of, of anything that they.
As long as we have room to store it, I'd rather just take the extra step, that's all. If we run out of room, then tell us, and then the next meeting, I'll just say, sure.
I know, I know some of the stuff that's been, that was really junky, that couldn't be reused, has already, it's, it's over here getting ready.
Yeah, if it's, if it's trash, it's trash, that's different, but if it's, if it's something that's usable.
The desks that we're talking about weigh 5,000 pounds, honestly. Because we tried to move them to undo some of the cabling, and they were ridiculously heavy, so.
Real, real, nice desks are heavy, and they, they probably, in the day, they probably were nice, you know, but.
Glue is heavy.
I think the stuff that Andrew's asking for is stuff that's basically nonusable.
We could try to give you a blank, like a, like a blanket list of X number of this, that's fine, I was just looking to see how the, how you guys.
Because if you're going to do it, we're going to have to specify the things to put them out to, you know, stick them in a miniscule or something, they're going to have to go out on a list anyway, so throw the list together and give people a chance, and we'll just.
I just got one other question on that. Is there a certain monetary value on a piece of property that meets the need to actually go through a declaration of excess property?
Well, $10,000 of, of value of $10,000 is what you need to basically properly get rid of it. Anything less than that, it's, however the town has written procedures.
Okay, and right now, we don't have anything.
Without, without a.
If we got it, it's got to go before us to get rid of it, technically.
It's basically, it needs to be declared excess property, and then disposed, and disposed of in, in a appropriate fashion.
Okay. We might want to look at that policy, and if it's like a hundred bucks or less, then let the department do whatever they want.
Night, Dennis.
Assuming, oh no, we got to do something to track it, because otherwise.
Yeah, we got to have an idea.
A hundred dollar chair is still a nice chair, so don't get me wrong.
It doesn't, it doesn't come to us very often, I don't think, so this is, I think we'll leave it like it is.
And how you deem it value, you know, the value of it too, it could be worth nothing, I mean, we had.
Boy, this, let's get rid of this rotten chair, hey, you know what? Why don't you take that one home, I think it's junk, you know, and that's.
Yeah, that's where it just done.
That's my only concern.
We're thinking like some of our cert, you know, some of our surplus of vehicles, you know, they do fall under the, you know, we might think they're worth more, but the, the value falls under that $10,000 threshold, and we end up selling for less, but we still end up going to the board to have them declare this excess property.
And you always hope that someone thinks it's worth more, because it's a police cruiser and has an intercept package.
Right, 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 you get a hundred bucks for it, and all of a sudden, somebody's driving down the road.
Sometimes you go to the state auctions, and people pay a lot of money for those intercept packages, it's, why, they're beat up police cars, they've been used and abused, and, but sometimes you will pay for them, so.
Or like, you know, lots of times I see schools go to sell 40 desks, and somebody buys them for a buck.
So it won't sell, it won't kill us to wait two weeks and just put a list, and then hopefully in two weeks, it's just, we'll take the list and say, put the list in a miniscule bin and get rid of it.
I think more, you know, we've pretty much taken care of a lot of this stuff on this side, it's more of the stuff that's on that side and in the basement.
And or recommend disposing of rather than trying to sell, if it's really, some of the stuff might be worth it, some of it's probably just not worth the efforts to try to sell it.
I think some, a lot of the desks on the other side are going to be repurposed, a lot of people wanted the desks on the other side. The desks that we were able to get rid of, that we needed to get moved, we asked people, do you want this stuff?
If something's really trash junk, we don't want to go through this process, but if something does have some sort of value, we really, once again, we got to be responsible.
A lot of these chairs, saw their, saw their maker, so. We had them out here for, for long enough, everybody kind of got to.
They've been moved around the building, from like the second floor to the first floor, to the hallway.
But it's not, it's not a problem, we can, we can get a list, we can talk about it the next time, I just want to.
That's all, but then we'll get rid of it, and it's really going to be on your recommendations anyways, and if you really think it's a piece of garbage, it's got no, no sellable value, it's broken, then obviously, okay, so we'll make the list.
Oh, the other, sorry, I forgot about that other wage authorization.
Missed one?
There was a second wage authorization, it's relative to the, to that.
Part of the carousel personnel movement over there, but we're not creating new positions, it's just filling in for someone that left.
Right.
Hiring up.
This was another, so that four, or no, the nine hour per week position, that's restricted as the library assistant. That individual who's in that role is becoming the new la, is coming the new.
Youth director?
Youth, sorry, I'm on Joes, Youth Services Director. Youth Services Coordinator, with the, yes.
Youth Services Librarian, that one?
Yes, Youth Services Librarian, and, um, since Kayla is leaving that position. So when this person takes that role, the position that will be advertised will be for that nine hour per week library position, a library assistant position.
Do we have a specific, um, dollar amount, we're going to approve the 24,000, we're going to approve the pay scale of rate, or?
15, 24.
It's the hourly rate? 15, 24, something, wage authorization.
Oh, there we go.
Yep.
Next page, Jan, that's all, sorry about that, that's all I was looking for, I'm looking at the other sheet going, oh, okay. How do I phrase that?
It's hard to do the math, what, how many hours a week, annuals?
So I would say, I'll make a motion to approve the wage authorization for Kaylee Hart, moving her from her 12, 12 an hour to 15, 24 an hour at a 29-hour benefited position.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, or call for a vote, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for pointing that out.
Now we've got those two.
I went by it 15 times tonight, too.
Well, that's the part of this. We jump around, you get it all.
They didn't do what?
Oh, God, wouldn't they be pissed? Take three, four, take four would have been.
Correspondence.
Yep.
Um, it didn't really come in in a written form, I did email all of you guys that I'd received a walk-in message to Osborne, Valley Road, and he was requesting the Board of Selectmen install a no-engine brake signs on Valley Road. He said, since the detour of the traffic, because of the common, it was originally just a temporary detour for the trucks, it's become a permanent detour, I guess, I wasn't aware of that, but, um, he said the brakes.
People start taking them, I'm sure they probably.
Yeah, uh, he's saying that, you know, him and his neighbors are now affected by the noise of these big trucks that come cranking down the road, and then realize they have to stop on the stop sign, I guess, on Valley Road.
Um, so what this is, what, coming Valley, turning them towards, um, towards School Street, Williamsville, or towards 122 side?
I feel like his address was like 1 something, 100 something, so I don't know where.
131.
Yeah, I don't know where that falls on Valley Road, I'm assuming it's closer to the Dunkin' Donuts, like that stop sign.
Down the IGA, down the very, that's the lower numbers, right.
Like at the old Coldbrook.
Right.
Stop sign, I'm assuming?
So it's people diverting probably between 62 and 122 is a concern?
Yeah, it would be 1600.
He didn't say they were eastbound or westbound?
If you think about it, Valley Road is a very minor decline from James Street down to Berry Pharmacy, Country Gourmet. And so they may be just using their engine brakes, and just letting the engine slow them down, rather than riding their brakes as they get close to that intersection and come to the stop sign.
Yeah. So I'm thinking it's a stop sign.
Yeah, I think for that pitch, downshifting would be easier than braking, because the braking is a pretty, it's a, pretty big pull.
Yeah, I mean, it, that whole thing is all I'm saying, even before that stop sign, so it could be from 62 almost, once you get past the cemetery, that little hill after the cemetery, it's all downhill back to.
Didn't have that much truck traffic prior to the common project, and he feels that now there's an increase of truck traffic, and he's just asking if the town can install a no-engine brake.
There's an asphalt, cement, and gravel yard right there, how, how do we not have truck traffic? I, I don't underst, I, I, why don't we, um, I, I would suggest we table it, bring this up at the next DPW Commission meeting, discuss it with the people that are more involved with the roads and that stuff, and have a better idea of what's going on, but I, I can't believe we have any significant increase, I mean, we do have different times, yeah, produce, I don't know if they're still doing concrete there, but they were doing concrete, but they're still doing asphalt, and there's still gravel and stone, and there's other yards up there, up on Coldbrook Road that, that have trucks. I want to say two different places that, that they have trucks come out of up there, so there's, there's a lot of trucks around there, and a lot of trucks going through there, and I don't know how much difference it's making, I hear them come down the street, go by your house going up the street, um, and they often come across, um, go up 62 and cut across that park, the parking lot now, whatever we're calling that, into roadway through, and turn down the hill. Don't know why they wouldn't be smart and go across Valley at the bottom there instead, except for maybe the no-turn at the top of the hill. I don't, I don't know why we're getting that traffic, but still.
I know I've seen no-engine braking signs at certain hours. I've seen those signs, that say enduring such and such powers.
That'd be more likely to say no, but I don't think.
I did advise him that this may have to go to the DPW Commission, but I figured I'd put it on his correspondence, since he wanted to ask.
Yeah, I saw the letter when you put the email through, and I didn't want to.
DPW jurisdiction.
Yeah, I think.
We'd have to make the designation, I think, for an, for the, for. And does that have to be an ordinance that goes to a vote for the town, or do we get to designate that for that area?
We can just designate.
Yeah.
So, but at least the commission should be able to, it's a road thing, then. But I don't know, I don't know if it's really warranted, and if it is, it would be an hourly restriction, like, like, we don't use sirens after 9:00 at night, you know, you know, it's 9:00, 9:00 PM, 7:00 AM, you know.
And whether traffic increased or not, this individual believes it's just noise that he would like us to see if we can help control.
And some of his neighbors, he said.
And I wouldn't doubt it.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get too stuck on, is it due to increased traffic, because it may or may not be, but I think anybody coming down 62 or Williamsville was taking a left on Valley Road anyway, if they're heading to the south end of Berry, they're not going up to the center of town to then come back down the.
Right, so that's why I said I don't want to change it that much.
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they might go straight up through if they're actually trying to head down South Street, because that way they're not going down South Berry Road, and then having to kind of come the long way back around. There might be a hand. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they might go straight up through if they're actually trying to head down South Street, because that way they're not going down South Berry Road and then having to kinda come the long way back around, there might be a handful of those, but.
I don't think the trucks can make the turn up town.
Well, now they can, now they can.
Some do, some don't, depending on how outside the.
I've seen the sign on the ground since it got put in.
It's, it's, it's doable, it's, not everyone drives as, as well as everyone else, but bigger concern is because, and this would be more for the DPW, 'cause I don't drive trucks with engine brakes, I've had a CDL for years and years and years. But the reason for the engine brake is obviously to, to assist in slowing the vehicle down, the engine brake is a, is a pretty good method of slowing the truck down. You know, especially if they're hauling asphalt, heavy loads, it, I don't know how necessary it is there, 'cause it, it's a thirty mile an hour zone the whole way, so I don't know if it really is a need and we can cut it back. But once again, better, better suited for the commission, and most of the guys on the commission drive regularly, um, and drive vehicles with engine brakes, and they can, they can give a better input as to how valuable the use of the engine brake is there at all.
I thought, to some degree, it's, depending on the road conditions, it's a little safer, 'cause you're not locking your wheels up, you're actually letting the gears. So your wheels still free roll a little, so you have better traction depending on the, the road conditions, and the type of road, obviously, a flat road, it shouldn't matter near as much, but I don't know though.
Actually, actually, in, in, in winter conditions, you shut off your engine brakes because, um, because your rear tires.
Okay, so, I got it backwards.
Yeah, because you, you're braking brakes all the time, the engine brake just stops the rears, and then, and then a tractor trailer brake, it doesn't affect the rear rears, it just affects the rear of the cab, so all the more reason the tracker can, you know, you're, you're more worried about your rear brakes and the trailer to help slow you down from the back.
Okay, so that's something.
But, yeah, like, when bad conditions, first thing you should do in the, like, in the fire trucks is kill the engine brake, you don't want it to suddenly stop your rear end and start it breaking loose when you, when you're going around a corner or something or down a hill, and suddenly it wants to pass your front end, you know? But, once again.
Agreed.
Better for those guys, better for those, than the rest of the commission.
We'll move to the next one.
So we'll table for DPW.
Whatman's report, do you, gentlemen, have anything you wish to report? I do. Okay. I took some time, well, let me rephrase that, I asked, but the Christmas and Berry committee took some time to meet with me last week. Um, so I could better get an understanding of what the specific concerns are and what was going on. I was hoping that most of it might have been a little bit of a, not quite understanding what the intent behind what we were saying was versus what they were hearing and vice versa, but there's a little bit more to it than it was just a misunderstanding. I know that personally, um, sometimes when I approach, 'cause it started off with the concept of the new committee, not necessarily their committee, that's what it started with, and then it slowly developed into.
Discuss a lot of things.
Multiple discussions about a lot of things, which kind of affected their end feeling about what's our feeling about them. Um, I shouldn't even say kind, it truly affected them, thus, the, we choose not to continue doing this anymore letter, et cetera.
Right, that's obvious.
They felt through various discussions that, one, they weren't appreciated, two, people really thought that they weren't paying attention to their money. They're a registered charitable organization, I believe, I've got paperwork, I didn't remember specifically that. But they showed me accounts of how they account for their money from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and on average, they receive and then spend almost about five thousand dollars a year. Our fifteen hundred was going towards the holiday lights specifically, you know, specifically because due to the age of our current committee, their time commitments and other things going on, they've now had to hire a contractor to make sure those lights are always working. And they don't have to think twice about going out and spending four hours checking which bulb is out.
Yeah.
So, and now they're in a, they have a committed contract for like three years because we have set a precedent that they get fifteen hundred a year. So they felt comfortable getting into that committed contract with that contribution from us, and then they would focus all of their other fundraising activities to support the rest of the event. Um, and most of that fundraising either came through letters they might be sending out like even a month ago, to try to start this process to be ready for Christmas. Um, they showed me, they gave me copies of the stationery they used, just to say, this is what we do to try to get people's attention, they showed me, I'm just explaining, they came with information to say, if you really wanna know what we do, this is what we do. Secondly, the reason they weren't here that night is this started with kinda more of a, we need some more help from their side. The way they thought they were approaching this is, hey, we need some more help, how can we try to get more help, whether it's more volunteers, or find a way to get more funding, or get the word out that this event is getting bigger, but we're having a hard time being everywhere that we normally have been. Due to either personal commitments, or health, or whatever it is, it's been harder and harder for them each year. Every one of them, pretty much, is, I don't wanna say everyone, but most of the ones sitting at the table when I was talking to them, and I met five of them, they all came and met me, been doing this for twelve years. And some of the discussion topics that came up at the meeting, and it doesn't matter who it came from, so I'm not even gonna say this person said that, or that person said that, but I'm just gonna say the things they heard that made them get to the level of, I can't believe this, I'm just done. The constant questioning about what do they do with their money? And we generally started the conver- that's a private organization, they do what they do, but then the, it kept going a little bit for different reasons.
I think we had public input on that, too, asking.
We did, and that's why I don't wanna like pin it down to, because at that point, I don't remember every detail of everybody in the room. But that really affected them, because they're like, do you really think we're taking money from people and not using it appropriately and accounting for it appropriately? And some of the comments might have been, just like my mistake at times when I try to be a little sarcastic and funny, may have been someone attempting to do that, but they totally blew it, and I don't, I can't say anymore. Because it was completely received as, almost like you can't trust them because you don't know, they never have to give you their books. And what hit them the hardest is, nobody asked me for my books, I would've shown you the books at any point, this isn't an issue about trust, because if it was, you would've just had to ask. And so they were just disturbed that people kept pushing that button, they were disturbed with the fact that people, in some of the comments we made as a board about, they keep pushing for more private funding through different donations, try to get that fundraiser going, versus what can we do about protecting the town budget, bothered them a lot, too, because they spend an entire year getting as much money as they've been able to get to include not just the letters they send out, but going door to door, to get face to face, say, hey, could you give me some money, it's for this and this? And despite all their efforts, they're only getting what they can get, and it was, it's just hard for them to hear someone say, do more, but then not offer to do it with them. In other words, it's like, this isn't a money tree, this isn't some, you know, people that donate to these things, they only, they pick and choose which events they can donate in a year, it's not like they can donate to every event and just add more to every event. So that, it really hit them hard when they're like, we were questioning their commitment, their time effort, and how much they really put in to trying to get the money to do this, because the truth is, if it wasn't for this committee, we wouldn't have had a Christmas in Berry. You wouldn't have had a parade, you wouldn't have had anything on the common until either a new committee came together and said, we wanna do this, or, well, that's about it, or some town group finally got together and did it, because they've been doing it for twelve years to the point that everybody takes it for granted that we're gonna have it. And they didn't realize how privately run that whole thing was, it was just people saying, I wanna be a part of this and I wanna do something for the town, and they've been doing it for twelve years, and after a while, it's just, it's partly human nature, something happens so often, every time you just assume it's gonna be there, and you quit forgetting about the effort people put in to get that in front of you, you know, nobody's taking a check for this out of that either. Which technically charitable companies can do that, they can take the money and help distribute it for administrative fees, times, efforts, or whatever, that money only goes to something that has a receipt saying this was paid for. And if it doesn't go to that, it doesn't go, it stays in the account, and they assume that the person gave them something as a donation, until you can provide a receipt, you're not getting reimbursed. That was, that's their policy, so I'm just saying, when I talk to them and then I look back at how our discussion was, I can understand where, especially 'cause towards the end of our meeting discussing that particular topic, or the end of that topic, it really started getting into the discussions and details about their committee, and it was no longer talking at all about the potential, what is a holiday committee? And then when I did speak to them, and the original questions that came up and concerns about who on the Christmas and Berry would wanna be on the holiday committee, all five of them at the table said, it was never our intent to be on that holiday committee. We wanted to use that committee to help us figure out how to get more and do better, we didn't want to be that committee, we did not wanna take this committee and become that committee. They said, that was never our intent when we reached out to town administrator's office and said, how can you help us? So, when we had our first discussions about, you know, and I know I was one of the first to say it, I don't want that committee to become the holiday committee. My intent came from a whole different place, I know you brought up the fact that at some point during the discussion that it actually might be a benefit, 'cause they can stay private, get their own funds, not have to go through the, how does the town accept the funds and then reload, allocate it, so.
But that is the point of the conversation.
Which is still, and they still agree with that concept, they agree that they can see how that's still their benefit by staying their own committee that is private. And one or two might be interested in the holiday committee, but they didn't wanna take over the committee, and if they do become part of that committee, it was more of just a have a voice on the board type concept, not necessarily to get too involved in controlling where, where that committee goes.
Which is all I think you meant in the first place, when you said they should have a couple members, but, but not all the members, because, and I, I did try to cover a lot of these issues at the meeting, we brought it up when they had their letter, because I tried to say that I know things can be taken out of context, but, you know, when we discussed about the money, as I recall, and I, I'd have to go back and look, I thought it was people questioning, well, what do they do with their money, and this, well, that's the whole point, they don't have to tell us that charitable. If we bring those funds into the town, then we have to account for it, we don't, and it's, it's easier to let them do it, and I, I thought, unless I really misunderstood how we went with that, I thought by the end of this whole discussion, which covered the whole game of topics that we really are obligated to discuss, we decided that they're better to be their own committee. And if they all wanted to be on this new committee, then so be it if we have the positions for it, because it's willing members, if that's what they wanted, but we, we talked to the pros and cons, I, I think, I feel responsibly of any of these things, not intended to, to single anybody out, or do anyone any harm, but trying to do what would be in the best interest of the town and the townspeople in, in a new committee we might form. And as far as their finances go, yeah, the, I, people were asking, well, what about this, what about that, and we're trying to say, it's, it's none of our business, it's not, it's, that, that committee has nothing to do with the town, we have no say in the money, we have no say where it goes, 'cause they're not a town entity. Um, and that, as far as I knew, that was the whole real debate about their money, is they're trying to convince people that it's none of our business, 'cause that wasn't coming from this board, that was coming from the audience, and we're trying to convey to them that we have no control over what they do with their money and their contributions, and if they work at it once, that's their business, and if they became, if that became part of the town committee, and those funds went through this town committee, then we'd have to allow for them, and they'd have to go through our coffers and be trapped. And I thought that's why we thought that that committee was better to stay as their own committee, and, so it's, it's frustrating, I understand, and I, I, I think, my guess when I was talking about it, the things you're, I'm hearing from you, was pretty much what I speculated, they probably had concerns with, and I just wish they'd talk to us about it here instead of just get upset and, and quit, because it was not, and I, like I said, I hope they reconsider.
There, there's more to it, a little bit of is, and this was, I think it's more because of how the discussion evolved in the meeting, as to why this seemed like it was more than it was at the moment, and, and, and the reason I wanna say that is, they didn't realize that was the agenda item for the night, and that being here might have been a better position for them to represent themselves, and because of that, that's why they weren't here, or they would've been here when all that co- and they would've been able to speak for themselves, they didn't realize. So because of that, they also wondered why we didn't talk to them before we talked about it, and I explained that our preparation to going into it was also very general, very vague about this holiday committee buildup, not the Christmas and Berry's role with them.
That was our first chance to discuss.
That became a discussion topic at the night, well, so all I'm saying is, because of that, though, things were said that really got them, and a lot of the stuff about whether it's the financial management, the effort they put in, we're on camera. They feel like their reputation got sullied on camera, and none of that discussion, because we weren't really trying to talk about the Christmas and Berry committee, turned the corner and said, how great they've been for this town, and how much they've done for this town, and how hard they worked for this town to provide this event, and so it just, it left a sour taste, it was like, we came to the town administrator's office, we said we would like to do something that would make this better, see if we can get some more help, by the time it made it to a meeting, we didn't know it was necessarily the topic of discussion that night, what it was about. We weren't there, and when the discussion was over, it felt like people just threw mud on us and said, we don't really want them, and we question if they even know how to manage their money. The two big things, the sticking points, okay? One, that was never the intent, and personally, I apologize for anything I said that led to that, and also for not realizing the direction it went, and making sure I spoke of the positives they've done for the town, because I didn't, and I had that opportunity to catch it in the meeting and I didn't, so there's, I take fault in that. But I do think it would make a huge difference if you really want to work with them and figure this out, is you reach out to them yourselves and say, hey, I understand this is going on, let's have our own kinda discussion to figure out what you thought I was saying, maybe I better understand where you're coming from, I just think it would do a long way in, we can't do it in an open meeting, I'm sorry, you cannot do it in an open meeting and explain your thoughts completely and clearly, so they can explain their thoughts completely and clearly, and be tiptoeing in an open meeting format about what you can and can't say, or, there, there's just too much, that technically, we have to be careful with what we say at times, because by not being careful, we did what we just did. So I'm just suggesting, if you got the time, it would make a huge difference, not just to them, but potentially to the town, to see if we can try to bring this back and see if they actually want to. 'Cause I know when I had my meeting, nobody got up and said, I'm ready to start again, thanks for talking to me, Matt, it didn't quite come out the way I was hoping, not to say I expected that miracle, but it, you can always wish. So I'm just throwing it out there, I just wanted to put it on there, I don't really need you to say whether you would or wouldn't, you figure that out on your own, it's, it's, it's really a personal decision at that point, I just was bringing it up.
Thank you for that.
Some, some of the things on it are, um, you know, first and foremost, we do appreciate what they do and have done for us, and I wish they would reconsider on their resigning and discontinuing. Heartfelt apologies, there was, there was no intent to slurry your reputation or question, um, your integrity in any of this. When we meet on it and it comes before the board, we truly, and I have something. comes before the board, we truly, and I've said this many times, the three selectmen do not deliberate or discuss anything outside of this forum. So the only chance we have to discuss any and all possible options, we we have to do here and do it on camera. Um, and as people ask questions about money, we try to cover the topics thoroughly. This is how it happens publicly. There there's, there's no way for us to discuss in any way ahead of time, how we want to proceed, what we want to talk about and and how it's going to, you know, flow as the meeting goes. So the, there's no intention, um, at all to say anything bad about that committee. We'd say exa- opposite, we'd say wonderful things about the committee. We like what you do. We like how it turns out. And most importantly, when, what I thought we'd get out with a final input on money is, is because you're a private entity, you don't answer to us, you can have meetings whenever you want without public, we can't. And if it did fall under this board or under a public committee, it changes everything. How 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 you meet to determine where decorations go has to be done in a public forum and everything. And I I thought our determination was it's better off to stay as a separate committee, uh, both for handling of the funds because it doesn't tie it up in the government, because your ability to form and make decisions outside of the public forum, um, is a benefit to the to the town and to your committee to make decisions. So, um, I I'm I'm sorry it came off a- any other way than that, but I think your committee should stay together and I think your committee did a fantastic job and I know the people in town appreciate what's done here every Christmas greatly. And I would love it if you'd come back to one of our meetings so we can discuss it as as a board, not as individuals separately. Um, my thoughts are open and honest here and they'd be no different in private than they are in public. Um, you know, I I think your committee should stay as your committee and if you wanted to be part of or all be included or have nothing to do with a common committee, I I'm fine with that either way. And I I thought we covered those probably not so blatantly straightforward because of of, you know, the round robin conversation that went on that day in the room. Um, but I, I think if you wanted to join the the committee for the town committee, great, but I I think what the Christmas committee does has to stay separate itself anyways. Um, because of the funding and the donations, it's much easier for you to do, not easy, but easier for you to do on your own than to do the same fundraising and have it go through the town. Committee is is appreciated. The things you do have certainly been appreciated and, you know, I hear many nice things from everyone around town, um, when Christmas takes place and I I really sincerely hope you'll reconsider. Um, and once again, feel free to come in and talk to us about it at any, at any meetings. Unfortunately, yes, it's on camera, um, but put the request forward and I'm sure we'll be entertained whenever you'd like to come in and discuss any portions of this or any things we haven't covered.
Anything else to bring up?
I've got nothing further.
Okay, I think Andrew, we can go through your report on our own.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just the four things.
Do we need this executive session tonight?
It's going to be very brief.
What?
It's going to be very brief.
Okay. With that, I've come to the end. Uh, anything else to bring up?
No, not not this week.
This is the thing, you know, when you.
Right.
Accuse yourself.
I can recuse myself before you go into executive session.
Okay.
That way, uh, I'll make sure the minutes reflect it that way when we're done. But I'll be, uh, pack my bag and head out of here, guys, and, uh.
Okay.
And we'll do all this fun stuff again in a couple of weeks, you know.
Yep. Good luck, sir.
And you as well. That's not mine. All right. Time for supper.
Supper?
Sleep.
I need to eat.
I gotta get something to eat.
Yeah.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Okay. You want to close the door or no?
Got a weird latch on the back, a hook or something.
Will we get the lights to work?
Okay, now we need the motion.
Okay, let me see. I make a motion to go into executive session per M G L thirty-eight, section twenty-one, exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to, uh, legal actions regarding with the town. Um, upon completion of the executive session, we will.
Adjourn there.
Adjourn there.
All right, we'll be in for what, ten minutes?
Five minutes.
You'll give us ten.
Correct.
We think, ten, period of ten minutes.
Still working on that language to just be able to spit it out easily.
And a call for a vote. It's roll call.
Aye.
Aye. Right. Okay, are we in yet or not?